Almighty God, we the representatives or the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, songs, dances, law and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to the elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today, those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect and kindness, in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies? Councillor Givney.
Chair, I advise that the Lord Mayor and Councillor Dixon will be absent from today, and I move that they be granted leave of absence from the meeting.
Seconded.
It has been moved by Councillor Givney and seconded by Councillor Adamin that Councillor Dixon and the Lord Mayor be granted leave of absence from this meeting. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Any further apologies?
Councillor Massey also gives her apologies.
Seconded.
It has been moved by Councillor Chongwa and seconded by Councillor Johnston that Councillor Massey be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Confirmation of minutes, please.
Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,753rd and the 4,755th meetings, held on Tuesday the 3rd of December 2024 and Tuesday the 4th of February 2025 respectively, be received, taken as read and confirmed.
Seconded.
It has been moved by Councillor Givney and seconded by Councillor Adamin that the minutes of the 4,753rd and 4,755th meetings of council, held on the 3rd of December 2024 and the 4th of February 2025 respectively, be received, taken as read and confirmed. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no.
No.
The ayes have it. Councillors, unfortunately, our public participant for today is unwell, but hopefully she'll be able to make it to the meeting next week. So we will now move to question time. Are there any questions of the acting mayor or a civic cabinet chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Parry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Transport Committee, Councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, last week we heard some bold claims on patronage data about public transport in our city. Can you outline how the Shriner Council is investing in keeping Brisbane moving to the places residents want to go and outline the alternative approach from the Coalition of Chaos opposite?
Councillor Murphy.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks to Councillor Parry for the question. What I can say is that keeping Brisbane moving is the number one priority of this administration. And we're absolutely committed to ensuring that residents are more connected than ever before. And I'm pleased today to update the chamber on how some of our projects are keeping Brisbane moving. For example, our new pedestrian bridges, the Breakfast Creek Green Bridge, has now taken more than 900,000 crossings since it was completed last year, exceeding forecasts by more than 70%, Madam Chair. Connecting Newstead Park to the Loris Bonney Riverwalk, this bridge adds to the mega-successful Kingston Smith Drive upgrade project, and it is a great legacy for our city. And also, I mentioned last week, our newly opened Kangaroo Point Bridge has now recorded more than half a million crossings in just over eight weeks. But of course, I can hear the Madam Chair opposite having a whinge, but...
Sorry, Councillor Massey, councillors, please remain quiet while councillors are on their feet speaking.
Well, Madam Chair, if you listen to Labour and Greens councils, you would have a very different impression of what makes good value-for-money public transport investments. Now, Labour and the Greens have made it clear in this place time and time again that they don't understand what value for money means. And let me give you some examples. Last week, we heard an impassioned plea from Councillor Massey in general business about the end of the temporary South Brisbane loop, the 86 loop. She claimed, quote-unquote, "It was an overwhelming success" and that she wouldn't stop fighting to bring it back. She also claimed that there were thousands, tens of thousands of people using this service. But actually, Route 86 wasn't servicing tens of thousands of people, it fell well short of that number. Would you be surprised to learn, Madam Chair, that on its final day in service, the patronage on the 86 route was equivalent to approximately two people per bus? Two people per bus? I'm not sure where the Greens study transport planning, but having an average of two people per bus over the day doesn't really work when it comes to public transport. What represents value for money that can carry two people? A bicycle? A motorbike? A jet ski? A tandem hang glider? But you know what doesn't represent value for money, Madam Chair? A bus. No. Straight out of the Greens' party playbook, Madam Chair, why advocate for an issue genuinely when you can just fabricate the numbers and claim we are cutting something instead? And then Councillor Massey had the audacity to spark fear at a local retirement village about us taking their bus away. But she failed to mention there is another bus accessible from that same stop and two additional bus routes accessible from a stop 100 metres away. But that is the Greens, Madam Chair. They have never seen ratepayers' money that they didn't want to spend, and they've never seen a saving that they wanted to make. Now, we know the Greens don't have a monopoly on absurd public transport investments because there's probably one other person in the chamber who actually has a worse track record when it comes to supporting bad value-for-money investments. And of course, I'm talking about Councillor Collier. Councillor Collier was the one who wanted to keep the Norman Park Ferry. And how many people did the Norman Park Ferry carry per trip? Councillor Allen? Do we remember the numbers on that?
No.
One? One? Two? Actually, it was less than one person per trip. And that was, again, Madam Chair, not public transport, that's private transport funded by the ratepayer. And it is not a good use of ratepayers' money by any standard. And I'm sure if you ask Councillor Collier now, she will tell you that there were so many people lining up to use the Apollo Road Ferry who now can't because council has cut services there. What she won't tell you is that the Apollo Road Ferry terminal was the least-used ferry terminal in council's entire fleet already. And we have adjusted the Apollo Road stop to better reflect the demand.
One moment, please, Councillor Murphy. Councillor Collier, please do not call out across the chamber, you're not able to ask questions of the person speaking. Councillor Murphy.
Madam Chairman, public transport planning isn't rocket science. It's actually pretty simple, and you need to have people using these services, not those services running around carrying fresh air, in order to be able to reinvest in services that people actually use. We know as well what Labour say when we cut these services. They always say, "Well, we could afford these services if we didn't have the Living in Brisbane newsletter, that'll balance the budget", Madam Chairman. That is what they say. It is the everlasting gobstopper, it is the magic pudding, the money tree, it is the gift that keeps on giving. If we could only get rid of the Living in Brisbane newsletter, we could have all these nice things. But they will never make a difficult decision, and they will never find a service that they can reduce because it doesn't represent value for money. That is their track record in this place, and that is what they stand for.
Councillor Murphy, your time has expired. Further speakers, Councillor Griffiths.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is to the acting Lord Mayor. Acting Lord Mayor, Brisbane residents pay a bushland acquisition levy of over $20 million each year on their rates. In my own ward, that money has been used to install a playground while no new bushland has been acquired since the release of the most recent bushland acquisition report. Can you please explain how you're using the $20 million of ratepayer-funded bushland acquisition money?
Acting Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you, thank you to Councillor Griffiths for the question. I'm really pleased, actually, that he's asked this question because it gives me an opportunity to talk about the proud history that this Shriner administration has when it comes to purchasing bushland for our city. Let's go back to the very beginning. Who was it who started the bushland acquisition programme for our city? Who was that? That's right. That is...
One moment, please, Acting Lord Mayor. Councillor Cassidy, I caution you, do not call out while another councillor is on their feet. Councillor... Councillor... One moment. Councillor Davis, do not call out, please, across the chamber to other councillors, you will go through the chairs.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, as I was saying, this side of the chamber has a proud record on purchasing bushland for our city. And in fact, it's something that I talk about with residents all the time, because when you fly into Brisbane, what do you see? All you see is trees and our bushland tracts of which this side of the chamber should be rightfully proud. Because we are Australia's most biodiverse capital city, and we continue to value, protect and restore our natural environment, Madam Chair. Now, I've talked about the history and how it was Sally Ann Atkinson who set us on this path, and how proud we should be that it was a liberal administration that had the foresight to protect our natural areas. And it must really grate the Labour Party, it must really grate the Greens, that it was this side of the chamber that had that foresight. And one that we have continued and one that I'm incredibly proud of.
One moment, please, Acting Mayor. Councillor Griffiths, what's your point of order?
My point was really clear. Please explain why no bushland has been purchased since the last bushland report, and how you're using this $20 million now.
Thank you. The acting mayor is answering the question and has five minutes to do so. Acting Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm on this history journey, so work with me here, okay? So in 2008, Lord Mayor Campbell Newman accelerated the bushland acquisition programme with the target to achieve an additional 500 hectares of land. I'm getting there, Madam Chair. If they would just listen to me.
One moment, please, Acting Mayor. Point of order, Councillor Strong.
We didn't ask about the history of the bushland levy, we asked about the specific spend over the last budgeted term.
Thank you, Councillor Strong. Acting Mayor.
To understand the current day, sometimes you need to look at the journey of the administration. Now, as I was saying, we have had accelerated bushland acquisition programmes within this administration. We have continued to reach our targets, Madam Chair. And in fact, you know, if Councillor Griffiths wants to continue along this line, that's fine, Madam Chair, he has a right to know what is being purchased. And I'm pleased to update the chamber to let them know that we actually have a settlement case occurring right now. So, you know, he comes into this place, he says that, you know, "We haven't been true to our values" and nothing could be further from the truth, Madam Chair. I am so proud of our bushland acquisition programme, and so are the residents of Brisbane. They raise it with me, as I said earlier, all the time, about how proud they are to be from Brisbane when you come into this city and you see the vast tracts of bushland. In fact, just this week, Madam Chair...
One moment, please, Acting Mayor. Thank you, Councillor Cassidy and Councillor Griffiths. You've asked the question, and the acting mayor is answering it, so please be quiet. I do caution both of you for calling out yet again. Acting Mayor.
So once again, Madam Chair, and for the benefit of all councillors, thank you for the question because it highlights the success that we have had with our bushland acquisition programme, our accelerated programmes that we've run over the years, and how proud we can be as a city that bushland is one of the most valued aspects of our city.
Acting Mayor, your time has expired. Further questions? Thank you, councillors. Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was a bit shocked by the last question, second time in the morning today.
One moment, please. What's your point of order, Councillor?
Madam Chair, there were two people standing on this side of the chamber, and they couldn't get organised on that side of the chamber.
I don't know, Councillor Griffiths, you know very well the rules of this place. Thank you, councillors.
Has to be side to side.
You know the rules of this place. And we do take questions side to side. Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councillor Griffiths will be interested in this one because my question is to the Chair of Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, Councillor Davis. Councillor Davis, last week, opposition councillors bemoaned the fact that residents in Holland Park were getting $321,000 upgrade to a park, and in an attempt to mislead Brisbane residents about what the Shriner Council delivers when it comes to investments across the city in our parks. Can you outline some of the ways the Shriner Council is making Brisbane's lifestyle even better when it comes to the city's parks?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and through you, I'd like to thank Councillor Adams for the question. And I know that residents of Holland Park Ward are very much looking forward to the upgrades that will be starting shortly at Glinterman Park. Madam Chair, it was certainly disappointing last week, but unfortunately not surprising to hear that opposition councillors came in and had a whinge about fantastic park projects that are happening right across Brisbane and including in their own wards. Now, ordinarily, I would not waste my energy listening to Councillor Griffiths' ridiculous comments in this chamber, but in this place last week, Councillor Griffiths stood up and moaned about getting nothing in his ward, when at the end of last year, in the Maruk Ward, we delivered a $22 million district park upgrade. Now, Councillor Griffiths, you might need to hear that again. A $22 million investment in the Archerfield Wetlands District Park. It is unfortunate, though...
One moment, please, Councillor Davis.
Claimed to be misrepresented, that was paid for out of bushland acquisition funds. That 22... That $22 million park was paid for out of bushland acquisition funds. It wasn't used to buy bushland.
Thank you, councillors. All councillors, thank you. The loudest. Thank you, Councillor Cassidy, I don't need to debate it with you. You've already been cautioned. Thank you, Councillor Collier. That's inappropriate. I did hear it. Councillor Collier's comment, thank you. Councillor Griffiths, I note your misrepresentation. Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the response by Councillor Griffiths certainly demonstrates just how concerned he is about presenting the truth behind the matter here around the delivery of parks and his apparent memory loss last week, as there was memory loss from others across the chamber about what we've been delivering, particularly on the south side. So Councillor Griffiths, though, last year was extraordinarily enthusiastic about the Archerfield Wetlands District Park. In fact, his Instagram post shared with his community just how excited he was about it, and he was there with Councillor Kim and Councillor Strunk, having a grand old time watching thousands of people come along and enjoy this brand-new park. But it's been my observation since I've been in this chamber that Councillor Griffiths does routinely come in and conveniently forgets things. So I think it's really important, Madam Chair, that we point out one in fact had been delivered as part of the Archerfield Wetlands District Park for $22 million. So we've got a three-kilometre walking and cycle trail. We've got a large adventure play space with waterplay features, and for those that have been out there, and I know some of the councillors on this side have taken their kids out there to play on it, have come back saying how amazing this particular structure is. There's a youth hub with a basketball court, there's picnic shelters, there's barbecues, there's a large community hub there which has become the home for the Oxley Creek Catchment Association. And Councillor Marks can tell you that this is a large improvement on their accommodations prior to this being built for them. But of course, there's also a native nursery there for the Oxley Creek Catchment Association so that they can do their great works along the creek. So Archerfield now boasts a world-class resource for its local residents, which should be championed by their local councillor, but it's disappointing to see that those opposite seem to value that investment so little. Madam Chair, I could keep talking more about the Archerfield Wetlands District Park because it is an amazing place, but I've only got a few minutes, and I've only really just begun to give justice to the things that we're doing with investment across our parks across the city. So I now want to turn to the other councillor who bemoaned that funding was not being allocated to her ward when it came to parks. A matter of weeks ago, we were successful in securing matched funding from the federal government to deliver our master plan for Graceville Riverside Parklands, which sits on the corner of where the Brisbane River and Oxley Creek meet. And this park will be enhanced and transformed. Nearly $3 million will be invested in this park, Madam Chair, all for the benefit of the residents of Tennyson Ward. And the reason that this came about, Madam Chair, was that the Shriner Council identified this as a priority project for the residents out there and for funding. And Madam Chair, Sherwood Arboretum, which turns 100 this year, and there'll be a lovely community event to celebrate that amazing milestone, significant funding was also allocated to upgrade the playscape there, so we now have a new fantastic nature-inspired play space. I've been out there, Madam Chair, and the kids absolutely, absolutely love it. Madam Chair, we are doing many great things across this city, including in the south side, and it would be appreciated if those ward councillors who are getting the benefit of that investment would... The majority of the investment would stand up and support that investment.
Councillor Davis, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Johnston. Oh, sorry. Johnston. Councillor Griffiths, your point of misrepresentation.
Yes, my point of misrepresentation is that I'm not ungrateful for the money spent in Archerfield Wetlands. My point is that it wasn't built out of infrastructure money, it was built out of bushland acquisition money. $22 million was spent out of bushland acquisition money to build a playground.
Councillor Johnston.
Just to read in the record, there was some... Sorry, point of order.
Councillor Strunk, your point of order.
Yep. There was Councillor Adams was shouting across the chamber when our colleague here, Councillor Davis, was speaking, and you didn't pull her up or even acknowledge that shout.
Councillor, we've had this discussion, I'm not upholding that point of order. Just one moment. Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. My question is to Councillor Murphy, the Chair of the Public and Active Transport Committee. Councillor Murphy, you and the Metro City Projects team, delivering your signature metro project, have made a unilateral decision to locate a bus layover and facilities in front of a large residential apartment complex on King Arthur Terrace. My objections have been ignored by the project team. Residents are now concerned about this decision and object on the basis of the noise, loss of amenity and parking that is created by these works. Given you've just stated that public transport planning is not rocket science, will you now look for an alternate bus layover site away from the residential properties in nearby Tennyson Memorial Avenue or Goodwin Street, which are industrial areas, or Bettervee Street and Goodiva Street where there are no residential properties?
Councillor Murphy.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair, and I appreciate the question from Councillor Johnston. I think this might be the first question she's ever asked me, or close to. But look, we always say on this side of the chamber that all changes to public transport should aim to benefit as many people as possible, and that's what we use, the guiding principle to design the bus network to benefit as many people as possible. This is a process that we undertook for several... We have been undertaking for several years now with Translink and with the state government, and it's actually an award-winning process. We've won awards for how this community engagement actually got people to talk about...
One moment, please. Point of order, Councillor Johnston.
Yes, Madam Chair, my question is whether the bus layover facility will be halted and whether Councillor Murphy will move it to an alternate location as I've outlined.
Thank you, Councillor Johnston. Councillor Murphy.
So, Madam Chair, we're talking about a number of services here, and I've got to give a bit of history on this because this particular service was something that we really didn't anticipate any kind of changes to what we were proposing for the Yorongah Peninsula. This was actually a very, very sensible change that we made to the 127 service. So what happened was that Councillor Johnston and the then-Transport Minister Mark Bailey got together to scotch sensible changes.
Point of order, Madam Chair. One moment, councillor. Point of order, Councillor Johnston.
Madam Chair, my question is whether or not the deputy mayor will halt the bus layover facilities that are being built outside the residential properties and move them to another street nearby. And I and the residents both would like an answer to this question.
Thank you, Councillor Johnston. Councillor Murphy has five minutes to answer your question, and I believe he is doing so. Councillor Murphy.
Well, Madam Chair, I think we need to understand why this layover outside Fairfield Gardens is occurring in the first place. And it's occurring because Councillor Johnston went to the then-Transport Minister and local member, the Member for Miller, Mark Bailey, and fought against the original changes that council was proposing to make to Brisbane's new bus network. Otherwise, there would be no layover at Fairfield Gardens. The proposal to actually have a bus layover in Fairfield Gardens...
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order.
Councillor Murphy seems confused. My question is about King Arthur Terrace in Tennyson, nothing to do with Fairfield Gardens. So again, I'm asking whether or not, Councillor Murphy, will halt the rollout of the bus layover facilities on King Arthur Terrace and look at an alternate site on Tennyson Memorial Avenue, Goodiva Street or Bettervee or Goodwin Street, which are all nearby and don't have any residential properties?
Thank you, councillor. The Chair is answering the question.
So again...
Not quite two minutes in, so he still has another three minutes.
Again, Madam Chair, we undertook extensive investigations into where we could locate a bus layover area, and the location of 211 King Arthur Terrace has been assessed against a range of other bus layover locations and a lot of other criteria that we need to consider. So we need to consider with bus layover the disability standards for public transport in Australia, so set by the federal government. We need to consider driver facilities, we need to consider the public transport network in that area. But again, Madam Chair, all of this is because Councillor Johnston and Mark Bailey acted to sink our original proposal for that area. And this is the only change that was requested to the bus network from Translink in his time as minister.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
This was the only change.
One moment, Councillor Murphy. Point of order, Councillor Johnston.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
I note your claim of misrepresentation. Councillor Murphy.
So what we have here, I want to be really clear for councillors in this room, Councillor Johnston opposed, whipped up residents into a fit of anger about the very sensible proposals that we were going to make with Brisbane's new bus network. And then in opposing it, we have come up, under Translink's direction, directed by the previous Minister, Mark Bailey, to come up with a solution. We've now presented this solution as part of the final network, and this network... And this network, by the way, not approved by Minister Mickelberg, approved by the previous minister, minister Mellish.
One moment, please. councillor Johnston.
Yeah, Madam Chair, my question is about the bus layover facilities in King Arthur Terrace outside the residential properties which are at 197 and 205 King Arthur Terrace, nowhere near this. And I would ask the Transport Chair to answer the question. Will he agree to look at an alternate location as I've outlined?
Thank you councillor Johnston. councillor Murphy.
Madam Chair, what is really clear here is we have had opposition to any changes in the bus network in her ward from this councillor who has a track record of opposing bus infrastructure, whether it's depots, whether it's new stops, whether it's changes to services. I mean, the, the, the proposed service that she opposed us cutting was carrying, again, on average, less than two passengers per trip. She opposed us removing it, so it's not being removed now.
Point of order councillor Collier.
Um, Chair, it's pretty clear that councillor Murphy is a bit confused and doesn't know what he's talking about. Maybe he could take it on notice to assist the chamber?
Thank you councillor Collier. Just because you don't like the answer to the question doesn't mean you can keep doing repeated points of order. Thank you. councillor Murphy.
Madam Chairman, I know exactly where this layover is. I know exactly what routes we're talking about. And what I know is that councillor Johnson has opposed every change we've made, and now she's opposing the new route layover location and terminus that Minister Bailey directed us to come to. So this service will operate as a two-year trial, and if it doesn't work out, Translink reserve their right to change the layover location, to remove the service. It is only in Brisbane's new bus network because her mate, Minister Mark Bailey, former Minister Mark Bailey, directed us to come to this outcome. Otherwise, uh, we would not have had any bus layover here. We would have left the network as it was, uh, which was a bad outcome for her constituents. But, one thing you can always trust councillor Johnson on, play politics with her constituents and, uh, you know, scare them, fear monger. This layover facility will not change unless Translink direct us to do so.
Your point of misrepresentation. councillor Johnston, your point of misrepresentation.
Uh, yes, um, councillor Murphy said that, um, I had, uh, requested this bus layover facility. Certainly, I didn't know about it until, uh, December last year, uh, and I opposed it very strongly when I found out it wasn't included in any consultation, um, to my office or the community.
Thank you. Further questions? councillor Wolf.
Thank you very much. My question is to the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, councillor Wines. As part of our plan to keep Brisbane moving, it's important to undertake major work that has the potential to disrupt traffic during the most optimum time to minimise disruption. Last year, we heard various claims made about why January is better than September for major maintenance works on the Walter Taylor Bridge. Can you update the chamber on just how wrong these claims were?
councillor Wines.
Thanks, Madam Chair, and thanks to councillor Wolf for her question and her keen interest in delivering for the Walter Taylor Ward, and in particular, ensuring that the Walter Taylor Bridge is available for use for her community. Now, as members of this chamber will recall, last September, this council engaged in some significant maintenance works to ensure the longevity and continued use of the Walter Taylor Bridge. Now, this council, the Shrinna Council, uh, makes no excuses about doing necessary work. And the necessary work in that instance included, uh, loosening and retightening of the joists, removing and replacing the surface road, uh, working and refurbishing the deck and putting in an epoxy to ensure that the existing deck lasted longer, that there was more flexibility in the surface. All of that required no vehicles and for the temperatures to be within a certain range. We chose the September holidays because we knew that that period had the least traffic demand through the year, historically low and consistently low rainfalls compared to other times of the year, in particular January. It also had the temperatures within the range that we needed. It posed, uh, the least threat to commercial activities on the northern side of the river, in particular in Droppilly Shopping Town, and also was able to, uh, encourage residents to use the train system which runs parallel to this bridge. All of these well-reasoned considerations were made in selecting that particular time. Can I say councillor Wolf, many, uh, services, including police, fire, ambulance, uh, and local schools and businesses, understood why we chose that time of the year and why the work was necessary. However, two individuals, uh, took it upon themselves to criticize us and call for another time for that work to occur. Those two individuals were, of course, Mark Bailey, the MP for the south side of that area, and councillor Johnston, the councillor of Tennyson. Now, uh, both of those individuals, uh, have to have the things they called for at that time held to account and compare what we did to what would have happened had we listened to them. Now, uh, all the information, um, was made available to councillor Johnston through a range of briefings and also through the media and to her community. However, councillors should recall that there were resolutions in this place, uh, put forward that, uh, the work should not occur in September, but rather the 3rd of January to the 20th of January. That resolution, uh, proposed by councillor Johnston, seconded by councillor Massey, uh, and that same, uh, those same range of dates were discussed in councillor Johnston's, uh, website. Now, had we chosen those times, now recall that we had a 14-day window and we brought this work in within 10 days because of excellent weather conditions and hard work and good planning. Had we chosen those days, the days recommended by councillor Johnston and Mark Bailey, that work would have taken 28 to 30 days. And that is because that period saw unseasonably wet weather. It saw 180 millimetres of rainfall over that 16-day period, which even was high for that time, 30 to 50% higher than you would normally anticipate. We, in our, in our chosen period, had no rain days. All of our rain time came in as expected. The temperature in January exceeded the range and exceeded 38 degrees, uh, on one of the, on one, on one of the four good weather days within that period, it, uh, one day exceeded 38, uh, degrees, which would have meant a significant reduction in the work rate of our staff. So had we chosen the date recommended by councillor Johnston and Mark Bailey, within that range of the 3rd to the 20th, we would have had three working days in that 21-day period, in that 20-day period. Because of when we chose, we had 10 working days and came in four days early, rather than two to three weeks late. Now, the accusations made by councillor Johnston and by Mark Bailey, that there would be significant effects to commercial trades and there would be commuter chaos, would most definitely have happened had we listened to them. The worst possible outcome would have happened if we took their advice. And it leads you to think and to consider that perhaps that was the outcome they sought. That rather than to get the best outcome for their community, they wanted to make this organisation look bad and provide an opportunity to criticize us. Because rarely do those two individuals miss an opportunity to criticize us. But once again, we were, we were proven to have made the right decision for the right time and were right to dismiss their concerns.
Further speakers, councillor Collier.
Thanks very much Chair. My question is to the acting Lord Mayor. In August last year, councillor Howard declared, "Together with Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinna, I will protect and expand Brisbane's precious green space by creating the city's biggest public park in 50 years." And that your LNP council will deliver this landmark project without selling off public parkland for development. Will you admit that this was just another LNP lie to win an election and you'd rather see a stadium developed at Victoria Park?
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order councillor.
Can we just get a ruling on use of the word lie, please? As councillor, uh, uh, Collier used the word lie, could we just get a ruling on whether that's appropriate or not?
Yeah, we're not using the word lie. So, if you, uh, want to re-ask that question and use the appropriate word there. Thank you? No? You did, we did not use that word, you know that, or accuse people of that in this place.
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Cassidy.
Um, councillor Collier's question was referring to election commitments and referring to the political party, the LNP, and their lies. She didn't call councillor Howard a liar or the acting mayor a liar, so what is the ruling?
Councillor, thank you, I'm not going to debate it. There are many councillors here who are members of that party that you are accusing that of lying. So, and you've asked the check, thank you. And you've asked the question using that context, so please ask the question using another word councillor Collier. Thank you. For the record, please, or withdraw the word line, replace it with something else. If you don't withdraw, we can move to another question, or would you like to get up and withdraw it? Further questions? councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you Madam Chair. My question is to the Chair of Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, councillor Davis. Councillor Davis, last year councillor Griffith sought to deflect attention from his own failures in working with the former state government to secure funding for a priority project for the residents of Rockleigh. Can you update the chamber on the latest developments when it comes to Stable Swamp Creek and what can be achieved when you work constructively with other levels of government?
councillor Davis.
Well, thank you very much Madam Chair, and through you, I'd like to thank councillor Marks for the question, um, because I know councillor Marks has a keen interest in this waterway as part of it runs through her ward. Madam Chair, just for some background on this, Stable Swamp Creek cuts, uh, across one of the most flood-prone areas of our city. It floods regularly, and the Shrinna Council has delivered a number of projects to improve, uh, this section of the creek. The final stage of these works involve council allocating funding towards Stable Swamp Creek following requests from local residents who raise their concerns with the Lord Mayor. So the Lord Mayor acted on those requests through allocating funding to deliver these works in partnership with the state government who own the majority of the land. And while we know that we'll never be able to, uh, prevent flooding in Stable Swamp Creek, uh, we can work to boost its flood resilience. And for that reason, we've put funding aside for the last two years for working along Stable Swamp Creek in a section, uh, from Fawn and Parade Park and Marshall Road. However, unfortunately, the previous state Labor government was not interested in progressing this project. Madam Chair, council owns about 20% of the land along this section, and we've been keen to work with the state government on a, in a project to boost waterway health and flood resilience along this stretch. But under the previous state Labor government, the attempts by council to deliver these works in partnership with them fell on deaf ears. Councillor Griffiths had been trying for years to get his Labor colleagues, uh, in the state government to show even the slightest bit of interest in delivering for the residents of Rockleigh, uh, but he failed. Councillors will recall that last year, we noted the state member, uh, the local state member's priority is listed on his website, which showed that he was more interested in, uh, hydrogen projects in Mackay than what he was in a project in his local area of Rockleigh. Well, Madam Chair, miraculously, after I raised the issue in chambers last year, Mr Russo felt inclined to utter the words "Stable Swamp Creek" for the first time in the 10 years that he's been a state member. Now, just for the benefit of the chamber, uh, this is from the Hansard, uh, late last year, uh, and I quote, "Every time it rains, I know that the people of Rockleigh face the unpredictable risk of having their homes flooded by a heavy downpour running into Stable Swamp Creek. I just want to assure the people of Rockleigh that they are not forgotten and I will always fight for them." That ends the quote from Mr Russo. So after 10 years, Madam Chair, 10 years, and being lobbied by his local councillor and mate councillor Griffiths, it seems that Mr Russo only decided to make mention of Stable Swamp Creek after they lost government. And the new state government has been in office for a little over 100 days, and yet I've already met with my counterparts at 1 William Street, uh, to move this project forward. I was out on site recently with Minister Anne Lay, and, uh, I'm pleased to say that Minister Lay and I were able to get this issue resolved. Action at last. Action that's coming about thanks to a good constructive relationship with the state government where councils, uh, listen to, and, uh, we are able to work together to live, to deliver for local communities. Uh, Madam Chair, this is not a magic bullet, but it will prevent flooding from, uh, in the area, uh, sorry, it's, it's not a magic bullet that will stop the flooding in the local area, but it is something that will certainly improve the health and resilience of, uh, of the waterways. But for councillor Griffiths, to make out that this administration does not want to work or do works at Stable Swamp Creek to get outcomes for the people of Rockleigh was always a political falsehood that was peddled by him. What has proven possible is that with councillor Griffiths' mate vacating 1 William Street, we've been able to receive a commitment for funding so that these important works will now be able to go ahead. The state funding joins our own, which has been on the table, as I said, for over two years, and it now enables this project to go ahead. And the residents of Rockleigh will no longer be a political football for council, councillor Griffiths to play with, uh, and the disilting and the cleanup and the vegetation works that are required can now go ahead. Madam Chair, councillor Griffiths washed his hands of this in the chamber last year. He said, "I've done what I can do." And that air of resignation was a very sad indictment, I think, on the former Labor government and the Labor representatives of Rockleigh. Madam Chair, this is a win for the residents of Rockleigh, delivered not by an ineffectual coalition of chaos, but through the dedicated hard work of this administration and the new Chris O'Phillie government.
And councillors, that now ends question time.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Madam Chair, I move, I move, um, that the suspension of standing orders occurs in order for me to, uh, to move a motion, um, that is, that council halts the rollout of the bus layover facilities on King Arthur Terrace Tennyson and identifies a nearby suitable location on a nearby street in an industrial area or where there are no residential homes.
Seconded.
It has been, um, moved by councillor Johnston, seconded by councillor Cassidy, to suspend standing orders. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division has been called by councillor Cassidy, seconded by councillor Johnston. Eyes to my right and noes to my left. Please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the noes have it, the voting being seven in favour and 17 against.
That motion is lost. Councillors, please resume your seats. Just like to take a moment to acknowledge former councillor Hammond in the gallery and welcome her back to the, back to the chamber.
Acting Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee Report of the 3rd of February 2025.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I move that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, the 3rd of February 2025, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by the acting mayor and seconded by councillor Wines that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, the 3rd of February 2025, be adopted.
Point of order?
Point of order councillor Collier.
Um, I move that the motion titled reproductive leave, um, moved on the 7th of May 2024, that is currently lying on the table, um, come off the table for debate.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Collier and seconded by councillor Cassidy that the motion from the 7th of May 2024 be taken off the table. This is a procedural motion, so I now put it to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Those against say no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division has been called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. Eyes to my right and noes to my left. Please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the noes have it, the voting being seven in favour and 17 against.
The motion is lost. Councillors, please resume your seats. Acting Mayor?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Before I turn to debate on the item before us, I wanted to speak about a number of matters of importance, including, of course, the traditional lighting up of our assets. Tonight, our assets will be lit dark blue, light blue and white to support the 2025 Oceana Track Championships. Yeah, I'm really struggling with that word. Cycling Championships is a collection of cycling competitions across several cycling disciplines held annually to determine the champion in each respective discipline. The championships bring together the top track cyclists from Australia and New Zealand in a competition for individual and national honours. Tomorrow, our assets will be lit in purple in support of the Queensland Firebirds' first game this season. Netball Queensland is working to inspire women and girls, encourage physical activity and family connection, as Brisbane gets behind the Firebirds' chase for the Super Netball title. Later this week, our assets will be lit red and blue in support of Sweetheart Day. The annual Sweetheart Day campaign coincides with Valentine's Day, raising awareness and funds to help Heart Kids achieve its objective to support, educate and advocate for those affected by child-onset heart disease throughout their lives. With 250,000 Australians impacted by childhood-onset heart disease, including nearly 6,500 with rheumatic heart disease in regional and remote areas, Heart Kids plays a critical role in providing lifelong support, resources and advocacy to our community. On Saturday, our assets will be lit blue to support the International Angelman Day, which aims to raise awareness of people living with Angelman Syndrome and their families. Madam Chair, there was some fantastic news this week, with the very first koala being released as part of the Shirena Council's Koala Recovery and Resilience Project. I joined councillor Davis and councillor Huang at the Brisbane Koala Bushland to see the release of a young koala named Fudge. Fudge was found in Burbank late last year and received treatment for chlamydia with a new vaccine developed by QUT right here in Brisbane. In the lead up to the 2024 election, the Shirena Council committed to investing in new koala conservation projects in partnership with the University of Queensland Koala Ecology Group and backing the registration of Queensland University of Technology's groundbreaking chlamydia vaccine. Fudge's success story is a major milestone in the Koala Recovery and Resilience Project, with works now continuing within the Bayside Koala Bushland and hopefully to expand into the southern parts of the Bayside Parklands Reserve in Chandler. Madam Chair, I would like to acknowledge the recent passing of Betty Byrne Henderson AM. A lifelong Brisbane local, Betty is perhaps best known for her work in the automotive industry, but is also known for her advocacy in the health sector and for her financial benefaction to tertiary education. In 1987, Betty commenced an ongoing philanthropic relationship with the Queensland University of Technology when she gifted a substantial amount of money to the university to establish research initiatives, providing student scholarships and assisting in the restoration of Old Government House. Her community involvement also extended to being a board member of the Brisbane City Council's Transport Committee and the Queensland Harness Racing Board, as well as a member of the Brisbane Cricket Ground Trust and the Queensland Correctives Services Commission. She was also a foundation member of the State Library of Queensland Foundation and a member of the Ronald McDonald House Committee and Zonta International. On behalf of the Lord Mayor and Brisbane City Council, I would like to offer my sincere condolences to the Henderson family. Madam Chair, there was another matter that I had hoped to address today as well. You see, over recent months, we have heard sickening reports of antisemitism, including here in Brisbane. Just last week, racist propaganda was found plastered to traffic poles in Paddington Ward. Days after, offensive flyers were distributed in Maruka and Annalee letterboxes. Brisbane is an incredibly vibrant multicultural community, and we all must do what we can to protect that by stamping out hateful and divisive behaviour. Recently, we commemorated the 80th anniversary of the liberation of Auschwitz at its timely reminder that antisemitism is insidious, and we must call it out and stamp it out, Madam Chair, when we see it. We welcome last week's open letter from Brisbane faith groups to the Jewish community, including the Catholic Archdiocese, the Anglican Archdiocese, the Queensland Synod of the Uniting Church, the Salvation Army, the Lutheran Church, the Greek Orthodox Church and others. I wanted to take the opportunity to thank the faith leaders involved in preparing this open letter and to lend our support to this expression of compassion and multi-faith solidarity and reaffirm our commitment to combating antisemitism in all its forms. Now turning to the report, Madam Chair. Item A seeks council's approval for a public tender to establish a corporate procurement arrangement in the form of a panel of suppliers for road profiling and skid steer services for asphalt profiling. Council obviously requires road profiling services and skid steer loaders with road profiling attachments to prepare existing asphalt roads for resurfacing works in our suburbs. These are essential to keeping Brisbane moving and by making sure that our road network is maintained effectively and is safe. Road profilers are large, specialised machines used to remove layers of asphalt from roads. The removed waste is crushed and screened at council's recycling facility at Pine Mountain Quarry before being repurposed for new asphalt production. This work is crucial to ensuring road closures are minimised and resurfacing is completed on schedule. Skid steer loaders with road profiling attachments are used by council to remove and profile asphalt typically as part of smaller maintenance or resurfacing projects. They're also used for work around road infrastructure like culverts and drains. The tender process will include an assessment of operator quality and competence to ensure asphalt is removed efficiently without damaging the surrounding infrastructure. Council's current tenders sit under two separate CPAs, which will now be combined into a single one with two categories. This results in reduced tendering costs and offers the ability to explore synergy in the delivery of services through the tender process, Madam Chair. The existing procurement arrangements for these suppliers expire on the 26th of September 25 for road profiling and the 27th of September 25 for skid steer services. Council remains committed to ensuring high-quality profiling and skid steer services to maintain our road network and, of course, Madam Chair, to keep Brisbane moving, and I commend the report to the chamber.
Further speakers. Councillor Cassidy?
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on all of these items before us today. Keep Brisbane moving. Now, the most congested city in Australia, isn't it? 10th most congested in the world on the LNP's watch. An interesting final comment from the deputy mayor. Where is the Lord Mayor? There was no explanation today. I think there was something about a junket to, what was it, to England and to France and to Singapore. I think perhaps that's where he is and why the, on the world tour, the 2025 world tour that the Lord Mayor is undertaking here today, kicking off the year in style, I'm sure, flying first class around the world, the Lord Mayor is. While, you know, he has left his new deputy to handle the matters of council and while the people of Brisbane are handling increasing cost of living pressures and increasing congestion and increasing housing stress, the Lord Mayor is only interested in handling his carry-on luggage on his first-class trip around the world. It's okay to shout out from the floor of the chamber while we're speaking, obviously.
If you're in the LNP.
If you're in the LNP, it's okay. So what we have here, this one item from this part-time council today, what do you say, about one item? I mean, we have these amazing challenges for this city to face, huge challenges. The deputy mayor just talked about congestion, as I heard her closing statement, and saying that this contract before us today will address congestion in Brisbane and get people home sooner and keep Brisbane moving. Keep Brisbane moving is what she said. And now we know the most congested city in Australia, that's been getting worse for the last 20 years, and there's a common denominator in that, and this contract before us today is predominantly going to be deployed into the suburbs of Brisbane, you would expect, and it is in those suburban areas of which we are facing some of the worst congestion that people have ever seen in their own neighbourhoods and communities with some of the simplest fixes, some of the simplest fixes we could have, but we don't because we have an LNP regime here in Brisbane City Council that is hell-bent on spending that money on the big things, on the big inner-city projects. And we heard councillor Murphy rattling them off earlier in Kingston Smith Drive and the Metro and the Green Bridges, where they spend billions and billions and billions of dollars on inner-city projects and just a few tens of millions on suburban projects. If that, over 10 years, that is, these contracts, over 10 years. So you would have hoped, even if we're just talking about addressing congestion here in Brisbane, if that's what this is mostly about, it's also about other things, you know, it's about housing and delivering housing and having roads that can cope with increased population growth, the wear and tear on those roads and the width of those roads and the function of those roads as well, as well as about getting value for money. We've had a lot of talk today from this regime about their so-called commitment to value for money as well. And so I guess in trying to make this item as important as it possibly can be for us today, because you'd think the Lord Mayor would have left some homework for the rest of his regime to do while he jetted away, but apparently not. We saw this happen twice last year as well, if you remember, where Ian Seehan brought one item to council. So no wonder things are getting worse under the LNP for the people of Brisbane. No wonder when people sort of ask themselves, "Do I feel better today and is Brisbane a better place today than it was four years ago or 20 years ago?" One of them's drunk the Kool-Aid over there. They think Brisbane's much better. They think, the LNP think Brisbane's less congested today than it was 20 years ago, and they think it's easier to buy a house today in Brisbane than it was 20 years ago, according to the interjections from the LNP on that side. Apparently, it's an LNP utopia. I guess when you're a member of a regime, you start to all think the same. You start to all think the same. Yeah, they're not allowed to think any differently, of course. So we know Brisbane's going backwards under the LNP, and we have an awful lot of road profiling to do around Brisbane, an awful lot of road repair, and we know that's just simply not getting done. Now, we've seen over the last few weeks, or today, we've got this one item for a small contract over the next 10 years or so, that the deputy mayor is now claiming will be a magic pudding and will make Brisbane less congested, apparently, according to the LNP. We know we're the 10th most congested city in the world. We know the council doesn't have a plan for congestion. We know that they're too focused on those inner-city pet projects that are costing the ratepayers and residents of Brisbane billions and billions and billions of dollars. We know that the LNP continue to move the goalposts on those projects as well, when they promised to open a project in 2023 like the Metro, then delayed the opening to 2024, whoops, that one didn't work out so well, and then delayed the opening to 2025, and then maybe open half of it, and then open the other half maybe a bit later in 2025. If things go well, we don't have another collapse in the Adelaide Street Tunnel, if we don't have another collapse in the Adelaide Street Tunnel, maybe things will go well and that'll get opened in 2025. You know, talk about congestion and getting people, getting people home sooner, and according to the LNP, congestion is going down because of contracts like this and apparently because they also take seven bus routes out of, out of the network and they cancel seven bus routes entirely and make people wait and open a Metro bus service that's supposed to arrive every, every three minutes, that evidently arrives every 15 minutes when it's not cancelled. When it's not cancelled, it's arriving every 15 minutes. So, you know, if this is the plan, if this is the plan to bust congestion here in Brisbane, then it really is nothing new. It really is absolutely nothing new, because what we see is this is an extension, a renewing of a contract that's been in place that has failed the people of Brisbane. We know it's failed the people of Brisbane because these contracts get put in place and the Lord Mayor promises a lot of things, he promises a lot of things before an election and then changes his mind after it. Can't say the L-word because we get in trouble for that in here, but we know he probably knew he was never going to follow through on a whole lot of those things, and that's why we see a budget delivered and then two weeks later, hundreds of millions of dollars cut from that budget expenditure as well. So I just think it's quite incredible when you consider that the only item of business that civic cabinet had the time to discuss last Monday, of which it was important to bring to the council chamber, and in their words, is about busting congestion in the most congested city in Australia, is a contract for road profiling services, not about expanding public transport, not about advocating for funding of the state government for a new translink contract. We heard from the Lord Mayor last week that he had no answer out of the new state government around a translink contract, and he boasted that the money, the money he got from the Labor state government was enough to get us to June 30, but he has no plan beyond that. There's no discussions at a civic cabinet level about those items at all. You go and read the minutes, go and read the minutes and see what general business was discussed over the last dozen civic cabinet meetings. I think there was one meeting where general business was discussed, and most of those meetings lasted for about 20 minutes. So, well, we'll find out next week, we'll find out, maybe it was in these, I haven't got to those quandes yet, we'll find out what the catering costs were for civic cabinet meetings soon enough, but there is no plan for inter-suburban travel, no plan around expanding public transport services in the suburbs of Brisbane, and all the LNP have to show for, apparently all their hard work and the millions of dollars in wages we're paying them to sit in civic cabinet and make these deliberations on behalf of the people of Brisbane, is one lowly contract to renew road profiling services that apparently, according to the deputy mayor, is going to bust congestion right around Brisbane. And when you talk about and you think about the go-slow approach on neglect, this is the exact same approach we've seen over the last year from, or longer, from the LNP
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Around their approach to housing.
Point of order, councillor Adams.
Very interesting diatribe from the leader of the opposition, but it is supposed to be about the report that's before us today?
I don't uphold your point of order. Councillor Cassidy?
Thank you, Chair. The go-slow conservative approach we have of the LNP might be ideological, perhaps, I think there's an element of that, but also just definitely an element the fact that they have been in power for 21 years and feel unassailable and untouchable, and therefore feel they don't need to do much, that they can get away with doing a part-time job for a full-time, for a full-time wage. When it comes to providing the services required, whether it is road profiling and resurfacing and even if it's just as simple as fixing potholes.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired.
Point of order?
Point of order, councillor.
I may for an extension?
Second.
Second.
It has been moved for an extension. All those in favor say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it, councillor Cassidy.
Uh, thanks very much, Chair. Uh, when it comes to, you know, we've seen over the last couple of years, Brisbane's population exploding, the, the pressures that we've seen on our road network as a result of that, pressures we've seen, um, on, on housing and housing supply and the LNP's go-slow approach around that, um, uh, this sort of, this sort of utopia that they live in, that according to councillor Allen, that everything is fine and dandy, uh, in, in the housing space here in Brisbane, it's always somebody else's fault.
Can I ask again about the relevance of talking about what's not in the report versus what is in the report?
Thank you, councillor Adams. Councillor Cassidy, please come to the report.
Thank you. Uh, thanks very much, Chair. So the work that the road profiling and skid steer surfaces for asphalt profiling will have to do, um, is around, you know, one of the, one of the critical elements of that uh, is, is infrastructure keeping up pace with population growth. You know, one of the, one of the big, one of the big problems, exactly, but one of the big problems that we have here is an under-investment. Again, we see it today, just a business-as-usual approach, uh, in a minimalist approach and just renewing contracts that were probably not relevant enough 10 years ago and certainly not today in providing the services we need. As we're seeing large housing developments, whether it's upzoning, uh, for, um, unit developments or more housing that is required, one of the critical things that needs to happen, uh, is to have infrastructure that keeps pace, whether that is public and active transport, but also road infrastructure as well, um, which is the problem, right? We have before us today, we've got a deputy mayor and a LNP regime that says this contract before us today, uh, for 50 something million dollars is all that's needed, and this is to go across Brisbane over the next decade, all that's needed to bust congestion. That's exactly what the deputy mayor said in closing, is that this, this item before us today is, is what is keeping Brisbane moving. The most congested city in Australia, the 10th most congested city in the world. Um, so it's very clear that it would, it's all, all talk and no action, uh, from the LNP when it comes to progressing policies and changes that we need, um, uh, to make sure we protect the lifestyle that we love here in Brisbane. And he talked, the LNP have talked a lot about value for money, um, uh, today and, and over the last few weeks. And you sort of, you've got to consider that in, in these items that come before us today and particularly in this one. And we know that the last year's budget and, and the, um, budget before that and the, um, first quarter review of 2023 is a big kick in the guts for families across Brisbane. They saw big rates rises, um, uh, last year a 3.8% rates rise, uh, rates going up as inflation was coming down, a 50% increase on using, um, cards to pay rates, a pension tax by introducing a paper rates bill fee targeting seniors, um, uh, fees and charges going up 10% across the board. Um, and, uh, what is all that being spent on? Uh, what we see before us today, that's not being spent on increasing service delivery levels out in the suburbs of Brisbane. We've got a business-as-usual go-slow approach when it comes to road maintenance before us here today. Uh, and we've seen advice come through lately that, you know, apparently, uh, when we raise concerns about, um, the concrete contract seeing a massive cut to the delivery of concrete in the suburbs of Brisbane last year, they all said, the LNP said, we didn't understand what we were talking about and it wouldn't reduce the supply and use of concrete in the suburbs of Brisbane. But when you fast forward to January 2025, not long after that funding was cut, we are now getting advice from council offices that say curbing and channeling will now no longer be, repairs to curbing and channeling will now no longer be complete because there's not enough funding in the concrete budget to do so.
Point of order, councillor Adams.
Profiling and skid steering, not curb and channel, is not in the report.
Thank you. Councillor Cassidy, if you can please come back to the report.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy. Point of your order, Madam Chair. Question for councillor Cassidy.
Point of order, councillor Griffiths?
Uh, yes, I have a question for councillor Cassidy.
Would councillor Cassidy like to take a question?
Sure. Councillor Cassidy, in my ward, there are a number of issues in relation to constant potholes on any street at Cooper's Plains, on Hamilton Road and on Holmes Road in Maruka and many other local streets. Do you think that's because the LNP, this LNP, this Lord Mayor and our new deputy mayor, I could call her the slasher, have in, have introduced so many cuts to, to councils' maintenance?
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Adams.
Surely the question must be relevant to the report in which we are having a discussion.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor. Councillor Adams. Councillor Cassidy.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, thanks very much, Chair. I'll take, I will take that answer. Very, very relevant to what we're talking about today because it's a real-life example. It's a real-life example. I know the former, the former deputy mayor, um, had this view that her responsibility while she was in civic cabinet didn't extend to her own ward as a local councillor. She said it in here, that it was only the five, inner 5Ks of the city that she was concerned about. So I understand that the former deputy mayor can't.
Councillor Adams, do not call out across the chamber while another councillor is on their feet.
Point of order.
And councillor Cassidy, I do draw you back to the report, please.
Point of order. Should, should councillor?
Councillor Griffiths.
Should councillor Adams get a warning for that? We would get a warning for that.
Thank you, councillor Griffiths.
A caution, we get a caution for that? Should she get a caution?
Councillor, I do not uphold your point of order.
No.
Councillor Collier?
Um, so, yeah, councillor Griffiths, definitely. You know, when you look at expenditure in last year's budget, um, of which the Lord, the part-time Lord Mayor and the new deputy mayor oversaw, um, was a $481 million reduction, a 39% reduction in the infrastructure budget, um, which, which, uh, is the work that is allocated to these contractors. So we have these contractors that are sort of pre-approved level of funding and then whatever decision the LNP make, um, we know that last year there were 3,000 less potholes filled. Whatever decision that they make in terms of the allocation of funding for the work that these contractors do flows on to local communities. Um, and we know that what we actually need is an increase in, um, uh, in funding allocated. I mean, it's all well and good to have these contracts in place for services that are available to use to council, but when you don't have enough funding to be allocated to do the work that you need out in the suburbs, then that's the situation we find ourselves in.
Point of order? Will councillor Cassidy take a question?
Point of order, councillor Kim. One moment, councillors, do not call out. Point of order, councillor Kim.
Will councillor Cassidy take a question?
Yes, of course.
Councillor Cassidy, will you take a question?
Of course, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Cassidy, residents in the Calamba Ward have been calling for road resurfacing of Benheim and Ormskirk Streets, plus a footpath and traffic island on Ritchie Road in Polara, where mums and dads currently push their prams and strollers on a dirt track. Why is the LNP ignoring these requests at the detriment of our local residents?
Thank you, councillors. Please remain quiet while another councillor is on their feet speaking.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Councillor Johnson.
That was again councillor Adams clearly calling out, shouting across the chamber for the third time today, when are you going to take action against her? Madam Chairman, I know how important you think this is.
I do not uphold your point of order, councillor Johnston.
Only me.
Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you. Thanks very much, Chair, and, um, thanks councillor Kim for the question. Um, I know how desperately those residents need that work done, uh, and how badly let down they were by the former LNP councillor and the part-time Lord Mayor we currently, um, don't have, don't have here, not in the country, but when he, when he does these couple of days a week, how badly let down they have been for that because I've been out there with you and with residents, uh, as well. They voted for change and they're still desperately seeking that funding. Um, the September quarterly financial report, which we saw last year, saw $19 million less spent on road projects and 6,000 square meters of roads less, 6,000 square meters less of roads resurfacing funded. So again, all well and good, um, to be talking about a contract today, uh, for a 10-year period that won't be used to the full extent because we have the LNP choking funding, uh, flowing to the suburbs to plug the black hole in their inner-city projects. Um, we know that two years ago, the LNP cut, uh, 25% of councils' road crews, which go and do, um, this work, contractors, contractors.
Councillor Cassidy, please come back to the report.
Um, thanks very much. So, so, uh, council cut 25% um, of the contract crews that do the work, um, that would be delivered under this plan, um, that do basic road maintenance in the places that, you know, you were talking about out in your ward in, um, Benheim and, uh, Ormskirk Street. Now Ritchie Road, Ritchie Road is particularly bad. Um, I was shocked, uh, when I saw the state that that road was left in under the LNP. Um, you know, gravel edges, mud ditches, uh, and wide verges on the other side of mud ditches, that residents and the LNP laugh and laugh and laugh about it. Um, well, I guess, I guess, I guess when you continue to laugh about those sort of things and you're called out for it, um, we know what the result is. They, they lose their wards. Uh, and that's what more and more people, that's what more and more people are experiencing, um, around Brisbane and we're going to continue to point that out. Um, and this happens.
Councillor Cassidy, come back to the report.
Some great examples from, uh, local councillors. Thanks very much, Chair. So, um, in wrapping up, you know, what, what we hear from the LNP is that, um, cutting, cutting the infrastructure budget and cutting the budget for basic maintenance, whether it's on footpath jobs or curbing and channeling or on fixing potholes or on resurfacing roads, they call that sensible savings. That's what the LNP's term. Uh, yeah, yeah, unsensible slashing, uh, is the real term, uh, for that. Uh, it is irresponsible, it is irresponsible of this LNP regime to be doing it because when we should be having a debate around, uh, what our city of suburbs looks like, uh, at 2032 and beyond and the kind of lifestyle we want to have here, uh, and what we want to protect, uh, instead all we have is a jet-setting Lord Mayor who is obsessed, is obsessed with building a stadium in Victoria Park and flogging that off to developers. We know that's the real conversations happening offline.
Yeah.
Uh, with civic cabinet and others. We know that's what's really happening, uh, because they, they have to be talking about something, right? Uh, and they're not talking about the business of council. Uh, so very disappointing, uh, but not surprising that this is the very best, uh, that a part-time LNP regime can come up with.
Further speakers. Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I rise to speak in support of item A. Now, I'm not quite sure what councillor Cassidy was talking about, but it had nothing to do with the contract before us. He was talking about intersections and concrete footpaths and potholes. Madam Chair, we're talking about a contract before us that is about the road profiling of our city. We are investing in the road profiling of our city and those opposite, the coalition of chaos, do not seem to understand or value the work that our city does in maintaining the road network. Anyway, I digress, Madam Chair. This item seeks to approve councils, uh, to commence a public tender process that will establish a corporate procurement process in the form of a panel of suppliers for road profiling and skid, skid steer services. These services are essential for maintaining the safety and quality of our road network, which is fundamental to keeping Brisbane moving and ensuring residents can travel safely and efficiently across our suburbs. The Shrima Council is committed to maintaining Brisbane's high standard of infrastructure and part of that commitment is ensuring that we prepare to meet future demands and innovation with cost-effective solutions. Now, for those of you who don't realize that road profiling and skid, skier services are a critical component of our road maintenance services, they aren't the only thing. Now councillor Cassidy would have you believe that this is the only thing that we do in road maintenance. No, that is incorrect. This is a critical component for us to deliver road maintenance across our city. Now, for those of you who don't realize, a road profiler is a specialized piece of equipment that is used in road construction and maintenance to remove the top layer of asphalt or concrete. This process is known as milling or cold planing and it helps prepare the road, rope for resurfacing to create a smooth and even surface. The key function of the road profiler includes removing damaged pavement, pavement, it grinds away worn, cracked, worn, even asphalt, prepare the surface for new layers, ensuring the proper bond for fresh asphalt, control road elevations and it helps maintain proper drainage and road height. And it also recycles the asphalt. So the milled material, as, uh, the deputy mayor said, will be transferred to coun, transported to council's Pine Mountain Quarry, where it's crushed and screened to reuse in asphalt production and re, reused to construct our roads. This specialized service is critical for extending the lifespan of our road infrastructure. Without these services, it would be impossible to prepare roads for resurfacing effectively, resulting in long road closures, costly delays and increased disruption to residents. This recycling process not only ensures reduced waste, but also lowers the costs and contributes to our goal of creating a more sustainable Brisbane. In addition to road profilers, skid steer loaders with road profiling attachments play a critical role in smaller-scale maintenance projects, helping with tasks such as asphalt removal, cleanups and site preparations. These machines are used in areas that require more precision, such as culverts and drains, with traditional profiling equipment not suitable in these large locations. By using skid, skier, skid steers, council can ensure that asphalt is removed effectively without damaging surrounding infrastructure, further enhancing the quality and longevity of our road network. Now, Madam Chair, the flexibility in this new arrangement will allow council to allocate resources more effectively and respond to our city's growing needs. With the city's growth acceleration expected as in the lead-up to the games, we're ensuring that we have reliable suppliers with sufficient capacity, which is, which is critical. Ensuring this panel, uh, sorry, establishing this panel, panel now means that council will have the continuity of service and avoid any disruptions on our road maintenance program. The new panel will allow for an extension for up to 10 years, providing the stability needed to plan for the long term while retaining the flexibility to adapt to changing circumstances. Chair, this significant contract plan is a vital step to ensuring Brisbane's road network remains safe and reliable and well-maintained. It's another example of how we, as a Shrima Council, are keeping Brisbane moving.
Further questions? Councillor Strong.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on this storyboard submission, the only item in Ian C. Um, and I was gonna, I was gonna actually state that maybe, maybe there's only one item because we have a deputy, uh, deputy mayor, uh, uh, acting as acting mayor today. But as the, um, opposition leader said, this has happened twice before, one item, um, which is quite amazing when you think about the size of our city, the $4 billion budget we keep talking about, and we only have one item today. Now, it's an important item, as, uh, other speakers have, uh, talked about, of course. Um, it's in regards to, uh, a storyboard, uh, a, a contract, who initiated the contract for over, a bit over 50, somewhat over $50 million for 10 years. Now, what we don't know, that's not in the, uh, in the, uh, presentation or, or it's not so much the presentation, in the papers, is that we don't know if 50, if 50-plus million dollars is going to be enough. Now, we just heard the, uh, one of the chairs speaking about, um, the Olympics coming up and this is all about road resurfacing, right? This is all about road resurfacing. These, uh, these, uh, two different type of machines, these, um, uh, road profilers and, uh, and they're two separate machines. Uh, one is a normal road profiler and the other one is a specialized one for smaller jobs and to get into, uh, smaller spaces, uh, for road resurfacing. Now, we, uh, I don't know if, um, if, uh, I mean, this money is to, uh, make sure that the contractors have the, uh, enough equipment, uh, needed, uh, going forward 10 years. Now, the money that's been allocated, we don't know if that's a ceiling, a, a floor, uh, a floor amount, uh, we don't know what the contract reads, whether, whether or not there's, uh, a capacity to increase that if it's, if it's necessary, uh, or are they limited to that amount? Um, we, we, we really just don't know, reading the papers and, and again, the, um, the acting mayor may be able to address that, uh, in her, uh, follow-up or her remarks, uh, finishing up this one item. Uh, but, uh, I, I, we, I will look back to see if I could find the previous storyboard submission to this, this work, this important work that's undertaken by contractors. Um, and we couldn't, we, we, we looked into it, we just couldn't see it, um, uh, going back a number of years, we couldn't see actually what the previous one and how much it was. Um, all I know is that road resurfacing is a, a critical, important part of what council does. You only have to look around the suburbs, especially the Tennyson Ward, uh, the Maruka Ward, to see some, probably one of some of the worst road, uh, roads, roads, uh, across our city. Um, spidering is just incredible, incredible. Um, and, uh, so it's important that we keep up. Now, we're not spending enough. Now, we're not spending enough money on road resurfacing and I think the last, the last Lord Mayor that really took it serious was Graham Quirk, and it was like $100 million. And I had dozens of roads being resurfaced in my ward for those years that, that that money was allocated. And of course, that road resurfacing and what we're talking about today, right, with these road profilers and the work that they do, right, is critically important. So, you know, if we're going to, I mean, the Olympics are coming up, so I'm sure we're gonna wanna road resurface a lot of roads so that we're not embarrassed by the overseas travellers that come in for our Olympics. This 10 years, of course, is going to cover the Olympics or the lead up to the Olympics and beyond. So it's really, really important that we do as much as we can in this space and allocate the money that is needed to resurface those roads and to be able to recycle, recycle what these road profilers do, which, you know, there wasn't, that word recycle wasn't in the, in the two, the two people that were debating, the two councils that are debating on the other side. And recycling is, is a critical component of what, what these road profilers do. So, so this doesn't end up in landfill. The other thing I wanted to say in regards to this contract, of course, is, is we don't own the asset, we don't maintain the asset, and, and we don't staff the asset either. And, and, you know, on, on a bit of paper, that looks great, you know, you don't have that, you don't have the, the issues-
councillor Strong, your time has expired. Further speakers?
Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I also to rise to speak on this item, and I want to thank councillor Hutton for what she delivered. That is probably the most technical description of a profiling machine I've ever heard. I honestly do not believe that I could outdo you on that description.
What about the toastie?
But, but, no, I'm not gonna bring the toastie back at all. But I will say a couple of, I will make, make a few points about what councillor Strong said. Councillor Strong said the city's getting bigger. This contract is about more. We're going out to tender for more services. You know, when you look at what we do, we do an exceptionally good job with what we have. And for, for example, my neighbours have four vehicles. Their four vehicles require registration. Their registration for their four cars is greater than the amount of rates they pay to the Brisbane City Council. Just think about that for a second. What do you get for your car registration? In Brisbane, you get 263 kilometres of serviced road by the state government. What do you get in council? 5,100 kilometres of road serviced. So when we talk about doing more with less, we do a hell of a lot more with a hell of a lot less and we do it well and we do it consistently, and that is what this contract is about. But I do wanna make one, one little anecdote, if I may. And I know the chamber's dying to hear me bring some pop culture into profiling, you know, being the chamber jester, as it were. I feel I need to bring this into the chamber, so I just wanna give a shout out to little Patty Jackson, St John's Wood, who always comes around to the office wanting to know where the nearest profiler is going to be. Now, a lot of councillors here would wonder, why would, why would a little guy wanna go and see a profiler in action? You know, because they do exactly what councillor Hutton said. They take the asphalt away, they recycle it, they profile the road, they recycle it, we bring it back as new asphalt. Little Patty made the observation that a profiler is very, very similar to a Jawas sand crawler. And Patty, Patty goes out, it's Star Wars councillor Adaman. Little Patty Jackson-
Maybe he was here when I came out, councillor. He might not have been here.
Yeah. Little, little Patty Jackson goes down looking for profilers just to see if he can spot Jawas.
That's awesome.
And I think that is absolutely wonderful. You know, councillor Wines in this place recanted on when we were building the Gresham Street Bridge and the kids were so fascinated with the crane work and all the big equipment that we put in place to build these things and build this infrastructure. Kids love that stuff. They go out and they hunt it down. You know, I remember, you know, maybe 10 years ago, Bob the Builder was the big thing, you know? Yep, dogs didn't have opposable thumbs back then, we didn't see dogs playing golf, councillor Murphy, or driving cars or anything like that. It was all about Bob the Builder and kids wanted to see plant material or plant equipment out on the road doing stuff. And we, as a council, do that. You know, we profile roads, we, we replace road surfacing, we collect the rubbish. Kids love that stuff. We are putting smiles on the faces of children these days. You know, we're actually educating the future kids of Brisbane, no? People know, or kids learn, that chickens provide eggs. And grandparents are educating their kids on that the Shrima Council provides infrastructure, services and maintains the city in the way that it should be maintained, in the way that it could not be maintained under a Labour administration. And this is a great thing. This is truly a great thing. Kids these days are learning more about infrastructure and how things are made and how things work and how things are processed. That's why STEM is such an important part of a school curriculum now. This is a wonderful thing. And I really, really want to thank the Lord Mayor, councillor Cunningham, councillor Hutton, and also councillor Wines for bringing all this infrastructure to life in this city because you are truly doing a great service to the future Brisbane.
Further speakers? Councillor Kim.
Thank you, Chair. I was just listening to some of the anecdotes from councillor Toomey, which made me think that today, I just wanted to share a short story as well about an experience that I had over the campaign. Overall, I think any kind of progress on resurfacing any road is great, but I think we also shouldn't smoke from, from the fact that we still have a lot of progress to do on the state of our roads. And last year, I'd been campaigning, so I'd been dornocking for months about how we pay more in rates and get less in return. And no joke, I was driving back around, I think nine o'clock at night time, and I saw a motorbike in front of me, got caught in a pothole and literally flipped. I couldn't believe what was happening, all the cars in the road, this is Pine Lands Road as you hit towards the Callum Bell Hotel. We all stopped our cars, we all got out of the car and tried to help someone who fell off his motorbike. And it was pretty insane because he said that his, the wheel of his motorbike got caught in a pothole that was on the ground on the major road and it was, he was very lucky to be alive and we all stayed there helping him out and he just laid down on the grass. I offered him a lift home, but he didn't want to, so he just stayed there. And that was basically a very crazy experience that I thought was worth mentioning today because as much as it's delightful hearing about Star Wars or Bob the Builder, I think it's also incredibly important to recognise the people who have had near-death experiences from the state of our roads. So, on the one hand, I understand the lightheartedness of council debate, but I think it's also incredibly important to recognise some of the shortcomings that we have. The second one as well I wanted to mention was in Polara, again, there is one specific road, which is the Van Deeren Road next to the Polara District Sports Park. There's a legitimate issue that I have there, which is that all the residents keep asking for, and I'm sure this isn't common, but many keep asking for that area specifically to be resurfaced because the gravel keeps flicking out at cars that when they drive past. Problem is, because I'm, I'm caught between, you know, just a rock and a hard place at the moment, I keep asking if a job can be repaired. I get told, well, we don't know when this project will be upgraded, but it will be soon. And when I ask for when, I'm not given a timeline, and then when I'm not given a timeline, I don't understand how this kind of repair can be done. Problem is, people's cars are still being damaged, if anything, it just causes more problems than it solves. So I think there's still a lot of work that can be done, but I thought it's worth mentioning some of the personal experiences that I've both witnessed residents having and also the many complaints that I've received in the past eight months from, from local residents, aside from also Callum Bell District Park where residents have had a few of their car flat, tyres go flat, their cars damaged as well. I know some local residents are actually starting up a petition as well to support this, but I think overall, I think the state in which we triage or we receive these correspondence, the level from all residents around Brisbane, I think there could be a lot more of an effective model in how we address this because I think it's really hard to gauge what kind of other responses are coming from across the city. And it's hard to, I had, I think about a two-hour meeting with some of the local road resurfacing team to understand how it works. So I understand the challenges around just the difficulty of time getting the crews out and the processes that take place, but I do think that there could be a lot more work and research done into developing and also supporting any kind of modern technology that allows us to monitor all the state in which the roads degrade across Brisbane, put it in an effective system and in an order that allows so that we don't see someone flipping over their motorbike on a major road in Brisbane. And it's a council road as well, which is pretty shocking. So I think that's one significant thing to really point out in today's council session.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just rise to speak on the Seoul Lonely E and C report in the council papers today. Firstly, I'd just like to note that the Lord Mayor is off on another Olympics junket overseas. And at a time when there are so many important issues facing council, it is extremely concerning that someone is overseas at a time when they should be here, working on council issues. So I don't think that's why there's only one issue on the E and C report today. We know that there are about eight or nine meetings that didn't happen over the Christmas break and there are a few things to do, but apparently this is the only issue for the city today. And for this, of course, all the cabinet chairs get paid extra. So we can see, we can see they're doing a fantastic job. So the item before us today is about purchasing equipment for resurfacing the streets of Brisbane. And I think it is good that council has the equipment to undertake road resurfacing works in the city, but the big problem, of course, is that council is not using it in the right places to resurface roads where it is needed in our community. And as a result of council's and the LNP's failure to address the significant decline in the state of council roads, we have the situation where roads all over Brisbane desperately need resurfacing. Oxley Road in my ward is in a shocking state. And, you know, councillor Hutton's repeatedly said how safe Oxley Road is. There's so many accidents, cars hitting potholes. It is appalling that a councillor whose own residents rely on Oxley Road to get around are essentially claiming that this road doesn't need resurfacing. So we know it's not because council doesn't have the machinery to do the job. We know, of course, because we're signing off on that today, we know that reason though is that the LNP refuse to resurface roads where it is needed around the city. In their own wards, you know, you can see lovely resurfaced roads. You know, if I drive over to Cherm Side or somewhere like that, I think, oh, very nice. But, you know, if you, if you drive over to Oxley or Corinda or somewhere like that or Fairfield, Fairfield Road's in a shocking state, Noble Street coming down the hill. I mean, the, the main roads all over Brisbane are falling apart because this council refuses to invest funding where it is needed around the city. And the residents know that. The residents see it very clearly. They get the message from this LNP administration that they're not interested anymore about doing what's needed to look after the residents of Brisbane. They're only interested in junkets to the Olympics, they're only interested in, in feathering their own nests and making their own wards look fantastic. So it is disappointing to see, I mean, my ward may never see these machines. I mean, I have no idea whether they'll come out to Tennyson Ward or not, but what I do know is this council and the LNP administration who lead it need to invest more in resurfacing roads, making sure the curb and channel is fixed, it's in a shocking condition. When I started, and even a few years ago, council's policy was we would redo the curb and channel first and then the following year we would do the road resurfacing. Now, that was council's policy for, I don't know, more than a decade, much longer than a decade. And that was the way in which council approached the problems. Yes, we can see that street needs doing, we'll do the curb and channel, then we'll do the resurfacing. That just doesn't happen anymore. Roads that desperately need resurfacing aren't getting done and you cannot get curb and channel fixed to save yourself. It does not even appear as a line item in the council budget any longer. So it is disappointing that council are failing to deliver the services that City of Brisbane need. It is disappointing that residents and cyclists and pedestrians are put at risk because of really bad road surfaces, curb and channel, and certainly ramp connections to that curb and channel. And I just think that the LNP administration should have, you know, I mean, they, they just think they get re-elected and, and they don't have to worry about anything that's said here, but the people of Brisbane are sick and tired of the neglect of the suburbs, neglect of non-LNP wards in particular. And it's only a matter of time before somebody else dies because this administration has failed to ensure that the streets of Brisbane are safe.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Further speakers? Councillor Griffiths.
I was gonna give someone from the other side an opportunity to speak, but apparently the, they're all quiet. I'm gonna speak on this item too and just talk about the pathetic, the pathetic state of infrastructure in the suburbs. And it was interesting today to hear councillor Murphy boast, boast about all the infrastructure they're building in the inner city, such as, what is it, Kangaroo Point Bridge, oh, we spent £200 million on that, Breakfast Creek Bridge, oh, more, more, £300 million on that, Breakfast Creek Bridge, oh, we spent money doing that, oh, we did the inner city this, the inner city that. Councillor Murphy, you're missing in action in the suburbs. You have no idea what's going on in the suburbs. In fact, our own Story Bridge, we're going cap in hand to the state and federal government going, we've got no money, we're broke, we can't fix the Story Bridge. This is, like, this is absurd. I, I just can't, I must say, I just can't believe how out of touch you are. I know how compliant you all are because I know, I know councillors over there who agree with what I'm saying. I know they do. But they're too scared to speak up, too scared to speak in the party room. What's that say about how the team is managed? What's that say about-
Can you come back to the report, please?
What's that say about, oh, speak of-
councillor Griffiths-
Speak of-
Thank you.
Here we go, the culture of the LNP.
Actually speak on the report.
The culture of the LNP, here we go. Let's come back to the point about our neglected roads, our neglected infrastructure. If you want examples of failing infrastructure in my ward, have a look at Marshall Road, Rockleigh. Take a drive down Evans Road at Salisbury, but Desert Road at Rockleigh, it's literally like a rollercoaster. It's literally like a rollercoaster because you know why? We weren't eligible for, because it was in such a poor condition before the last floods, the federal government and state government wouldn't give us any money to fix it up because it was in such shocking condition anyway.
Pre-existing damage.
Pre-existing damage. That was the same for Ipswich Road at Rockleigh, that's the same for Bow Hill Road at Willawong. If you wanna see, and I've been to third world countries, if you wanna see third world, go for a drive along Bow Hill Road. Go for a drive along Dollar Street. Go and look at Northbury Street. Go and look at Musgrave Road, Ashover Road or Dunn Road. You wanna see neglect, you go and see those roads. I'm happy to take you for a drive. I take officers for drives out there and they go, yeah, it's shocking councillor, and that's it. It's shocking. We'll add it to our list and nothing ever happens. Nothing ever happens. Oh councillor, we send it up and then it comes back and it's all crossed out. That's what's happening with our little slasher mayor and deputy mayor. They're slashing staff, they're slashing budgets. What do we do? We lose 460 staff since the election? 460 permanent staff? We lost hundreds of casual staff?
Councillor Griffiths, come back to the report.
I am talking about the report, I'm talking about what we're delivering and we're delivering really poor services for the residents of Brisbane. And I know because I'm out there and I see my ward. I drive around daily, I have to listen to complaints. And I make those complaints to staff and literally now, I don't talk to a team of staff- And I make those complaints to staff and literally now, I don't talk to a team of staff, I talk to one staff member who then talks to five other councillors. That one staff member has to deal with five councillors. Before, we used to have a team of people we'd tell them.
Again councillor Griffiths, and don't speak over me while I'm speaking, come back to the report.
I'm talking about how shocking the state of our roads are, how shocking the delivery of this council is, how pathetic the LNP's delivery for the residents of Brisbane is. It is shocking. And businesses say to me, we pay our rates? And I say, yeah, and it's all being spent in the inner city. Look at those new bridges you're getting. Look at that new metro. They're not concerned about you, they're only concerned about the inner city. That is the LNP council sitting here now, today. And the others sitting in that group are too scared to speak up, too scared to have a se-
Councillor Griffiths, your time's expired. Any further speakers? Acting Mayor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Well, that was a widespread discussion, wasn't it? Very interesting contributions this afternoon. First, I'd like to, through you, Madam Chair, commend, because I believe, you know, give credit where credit's due, commend councillor Kim for her contribution because she came here and at least she spoke about a genuine local issue that's important to her residents. Now, I sincerely hope-
One moment, please. Ask all councillors to remain quiet while another councillor is on their feet. Acting Mayor.
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Griffiths.
Does that include councillor Adams?
I don't uphold your point of order. Acting Mayor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. So as I was saying, councillor Kim came in here and talked about what was a relevant local issue for her. And good honour, she's listened to people. So I look forward to receiving councillor Kim's budget submission, along with other councillors in this place, now that the Lord Mayor has requested the budget submissions formally. And I'm sure that councillor Kim will certain, will-
One moment, please. Councillor Collier and councillor Griffiths. Caution you against calling out. Again. Acting Mayor.
Now, Madam Chair, this was an item about road profiling equipment, important work that's continuing to happen in our suburbs. Through you councillor Griffiths, you wouldn't know what happened in our party room because we are a cohesive team that support each other. He has never been in a united team with experience. Okay? So don't come in here and tell me about what happens in our party room. Because I dare say the culture in our party room is a whole lot better than the culture in your caucus. Because your deputy, your deputy, Madam Chair, she didn't even return to give a valedictory speech. How bad was the culture in their team? So don't come in here and talk to me and this place about how councillors on our side of the chamber feel.
One moment, please. One moment, I'm speaking. So you don't do a point of order while I'm speaking. Councillor Collier, I've asked you not to call out. Cease interjecting, please, while another councillor is on their feet. It is unsuitable meeting conduct and I ask you to stop.
Yes, should councillor Cunningham be directing comments through you if she's talking to me?
She did, and you can play it back and listen to it later. Thank you councillor Griffiths, I don't uphold your point of order. Be seated. Acting Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I certainly did and am always very careful to make sure that my comments are directed through the chair. So on that point, councillor Cassidy came in here and talked about everything other than what was in the item.
One moment, Acting Mayor. Point of order councillor Collier.
Just seeking your clarification, where in the meeting's local law does it say that you can order a councillor to be seated firstly? And second of all, you have repeatedly cautioned me and targeted me for calling out across the chamber, but I know that there are many other councillors on the other side of the chamber who you have not named. You are unfairly targeting me over and over. You have done it at least three times this meeting, Chair.
Councillor Collier, I am managing the meeting, not you, and I do not need your advice. And if you read section 51, when the chair speaks during the progress of a meeting, any councillor then speaking or offering to speak shall immediately be seated. Every councillor present shall preserve strict silence so that the chair may be heard without interruption. The councillor has finished speaking and the acting mayor was called upon to speak, you shall sit down.
Point of order, Madam Chairman.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Madam Chairman, you have repeatedly said to both me, because I've checked the minutes since your email last night, and to councillor Collier, to you've told us to sit down as a direction of the chair, not when you are speaking, but to stop us from speaking at other times. So Madam Chairman, can you point to the rule that says you can tell us to sit down instead of using the unsuitable meeting conduct provisions that are there if you believe a councillor is not acting in accordance with the rules?
Thank you councillor Johnston. In order to continue running the meeting, I will request councillors to sit down when they have finished speaking so that we can move on to other speakers. So I don't uphold your point of order. And I don't want you to raise the same point of order again either.
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Madam Chairman, as you have no power under the meeting's local law to direct a councillor to sit down as a penalty, I move dissent in your ruling.
Dissent in my ruling has been moved by councillor Johnston, seconded by councillor Collier. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The nos have it.
Division.
Division. Division has been called by councillor Johnston and seconded by councillor Collier. Eyes to my right, noes to my left. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the nos have it, the voting being seven in favour and 17 against.
Acting Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll briefly conclude my comments. So as I was saying, or I was trying to say before I was interrupted, through you, Madam Chair, councillor Cassidy talked about everything but the road profiling equipment. Once again, he's come into this place and he's talked down the work that our council officers do to make Brisbane a better place for everyone. They talked down the work and the progress that this council is making to keeping Brisbane moving. We are focused on the basics, Madam Chair. Eighty-nine percent of the Lord Mayor's budget, eighty-nine percent of the Lord Mayor's budget-
One moment, please, Acting Mayor. Point of order councillor Cassidy.
Claim to be misrepresented.
I note your claim of misrepresentation. Acting Mayor.
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Griffiths.
Yes, will councillor Cunningham table how she's calculated that eighty-nine percent?
It's called the budget document.
Can you show us your calculation?
Thank you councillor.
Questions come through the chair. Acting Mayor.
As I was saying, Madam Chair, we are focused on the basics and we are delivering the services for the people of Brisbane. Eighty-nine percent of the Lord Mayor's budget gets spent in the suburbs with our suburbs first guarantee, and it's something which I'm incredibly proud of, which we will continue to build better roads for our city and make Brisbane a better place to live for everyone. I commend it to the chamber.
Point of, your misrepresentation, please councillor Cassidy.
Thank you very much, Chair. Councillor Cunningham made some strange claim that I wasn't being relevant in my contribution. And in fact, what I spoke about for almost 20 minutes was congestion and housing and value for money, how it related to this contract. And the only LNP councillor that spoke got up and spoke about Bob the Builder and some sort of sand crawler thing from Star Wars. I mean, that is the difference. That is the difference.
We'll now put the motion to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Division called by Acting Mayor and councillor, seconded by councillor Strutt. All those in favour to the right, those against to the left. Please ring the bells.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 23 in favour and one abstention.
Motion is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Councillor Givney.
Point of order. Just wanted to, Chair, I would like to move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which only commences when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
Has been moved by councillor Givney and seconded by councillor Adaman that the meeting adjourned for a period of 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The meeting will be adjourned when all councillors have left the chamber.
Councillor Murphy, Transport Committee report.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I move that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 4th of February, 2025, be adopted.
Seconded.
It was moved by councillor Murphy, seconded by councillor Perry, that the report of the Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday 4th, February 2025 be adopted. Is there any debate, councillor Murphy?
Yes, Mr Deputy Chair. Well, it's been a long road to get here, but it is officially turn up and go time and Brisbane Metro has launched and the committee received an update on the commencement of services on the M2 line. This is the biggest evolution to our transport network in over 20 years and it starts with the M2 service. And the committee heard that there's a lot to love, Deputy Chair, a lot to love. Of course, we heard about the new and improved infrastructure that is being delivered and it continues to be delivered as part of the Metro project. We heard, of course, about the Rochedale Depot out in your ward, the largest electric bus depot in the country and one of the most technologically advanced facilities of its kind in the country. This is, of course, the depot that provides the stabling and maintenance to the new electric Metro fleet and an item that is of much interest to other jurisdictions around the world who are hoping to replicate our success here. We also heard, the committee heard about upgrades to existing busway stations, so UQ Lakes, which has gone from two platforms to three platforms, the extensive renovations to formerly known as King George Square Station, but to be known as City Hall Busway Station and the almost completed works at the Cultural Centre Station. And anyone who's used Cultural Centre Station in recent weeks will testify to what a massive change that upgraded and elongated station and platform is. We also heard about our comprehensive operational readiness programme and campaign that was undertaken to prepare not only our drivers, our maintainers, our depot and counter staff, our network control centre, our Brisbane Metropolitan Traffic Management Centre, but also our customers, our passengers for the introduction of Metro services and a number of the changes, the operational changes which our passengers experience both on board and at platform when it comes to Brisbane Metro. We also heard about the recruitment endeavour, so 60 new Metro operators, delivering 900 hours of operator training, 72 different operational scenarios for different busway closures and diversions, 46 full dress rehearsals and 58,000 kilometres of preparation and training across the network to deliver this service. We also heard about the lessons learned from our highly successful trial on the 169, which allowed us to identify some teething issues prior to the launch of formal services. As a result of 169 trial, we increased operator training and support, we increased the number and duration of trial operations, we improved the onboard radio system and made changes to the grab handles and moved the door to self-service, which is working out really well, Deputy Chair, really well. In its first week, we delivered 1,200 trips and 51,000 people travelling on the M2. We also implemented a number of changes to Brisbane's new bus network, which included nine changes to our bus network and then 28 changes to district routes, which are the school routes. I want to thank and commend the Metro Project team and Transport for Brisbane for their work to get us to this point, but in acknowledging that Metro has started, this is just the commencement of a number of major changes to occur to Brisbane's bus network this year as we continue to improve our operational cadence and get ready for more and more changes to the bus network, all of which are improvements. And just finally, Chair, there were some issues, I think, raised by councillor Johnston before on the 107, the 192, about new bus stops on King Arthur Terrace. I think it's just important to note that councillor Johnston, in consultation, supported new services coming out to King Arthur Terrace. And certainly there were no bus services coming to King Arthur Terrace prior to BNBN. So it is interesting that she's now opposing these changes. For what reasons, we do not know at this stage. But like with all other meddling that she's made with Brisbane's new bus network and this project, I'm very dubious as to the motivations and I am concerned that she's not fed in come when it comes to why these changes are necessary. I'll leave it at that. Thanks, Chair.
Any further debate, councillor Collier?
Thanks very much, Chair. And through you, before I speak to the committee presentation, I note that we raised some questions regarding the North Brisbane Bike Way and would ask it in his summing up, councillor Murphy addressed those questions as promised. I know he intended to last week but ran out of time and, yeah, just still waiting on some clarification on the- I know he intended to last week but ran out of time and yeah, just still waiting on some clarification on that. So yeah, if that could be addressed in his summing up. Well, Metro launched two, three, four, I don't know, but apparently this time it's permanent.
Turn up and go now.
Yeah, apparently it's turn up and go now. And it appears, you know, that the LNP regime is really more interested in optics than the reliability and the performance of decent public transport options in Brisbane. We hear time and time again from this LNP regime, they talk about, you know, apparently getting home sooner and safer and keeping Brisbane moving. Well, what the reality is, on the streets and on the footpaths and on the bikeways of Brisbane, is that we are getting more and more congested every single day. We are the most congested city in Australia and we are the tenth most congested city in, yeah, tenth most congested city in the world. And that is this LNP regime's legacy, of course. Brisbane Metro is at the centre of all of this because it has been plagued by mismanagement by this LNP regime from day one. The signature hallmarks of this project, of course, are massive cost blowouts, delays and false starts and hundreds of thousands of dollars spent on parties. How hard is it really to run buses on a busway? At this point, it at this point, it does really feel like the LNP are just making it up all along. And that's, of course, where the Metro started. It was drawn on the back of a napkin by this Lord Mayor. Ratepayers. Yes, I hope they framed that for history's sake. You know, we had a big lesson in history from the deputy mayor a bit earlier. The napkin I would really like to see framed and put up in City Hall. What is very clear though is that the Lord Mayor has no plan to tackle Brisbane's congestion crisis. We have said repeatedly on this side of the chamber that the key to solving the congestion crisis in Brisbane is reliable and high frequency services right across every single one of Brisbane's suburbs, not just one corridor leading into the CBD. Brisbane Metro was first announced in twenty sixteen and the reality is today, it's still not delivered despite the LNP council changing the goalposts of this project honestly every other day at this point. This project was supposed to cost, of course, nine hundred and forty-four million. And now what councillor Murphy won't tell you is that it does sit at about one point five five billion to date and it's not even done. Those cost blowouts don't include funds for the so-called expansion, which of course has now been put on ice because of council's poor planning. They would rather spend, remember, a hundred, nearly a hundred and forty thousand dollars of ratepayers' money on one party, patting themselves on the back. And let's not forget that that was the celebration, of course, of the first failed launch. So forgive, in October last year. So instead of spending that money on a party, we could put it towards delivering the actual project. Ratepayers really are paying more and getting less under the LNP and the Metro really does sum it up.
Any further debate? Councillor Edward.
Thank you Deputy Chair. I also rise to speak about our city-changing Brisbane Metro. I just wanted to highlight some of the incredible feats that we have included with this Brisbane Metro. In my role as Deputy Chair on Community and the Arts, we hear about some of the incredible accessibility and inclusion initiatives this council rolls out every single year. But I think what the Brisbane Metro Accessibility Working Group have done is honestly the creme de la creme. Over the past four years, the team have had forty-five design changes because they incorporated and took people with lived disability experiences on this journey over four years. And that was an incredible accolade to councillor Murphy and his entire team to ensure that the Brisbane Metro is the best it can possibly be. And I'm so grateful that we did that. It's the first of its kind in any public transport design that we or the state government have undertaken. And I'm sure going forward we'll ensure that we do this. But I just wanted to also highlight, but yeah, but the Brisbane Metro is improving the quality of public transport for people with a disability. And I think we've definitely done that with all of our upgrades through the Brisbane Metro Accessibility Working Group. And I'd like to thank the team and the incredible work that they have done in this space. Thank you Deputy Chair.
Any further debate councillor Cassidy?
Uh, thanks Chair. I rise to speak on the report, the launch of the Metro, the M two. Not the highway and not, not the, the original launch of the original M one part of the Metro, which was launched then cancelled for obvious reasons. You know, it was done for optics. I'm sure they didn't just launch it and then realise that half the station upgrades on the South East Busway weren't done. And the Adelaide Street Tunnel wasn't complete and the King George Square, soon to be called City Hall Station, wasn't complete. So therefore the M one line, the Metro couldn't run at all. But it was nice to launch it with a hundred and forty thousand dollar party though, wasn't it? Nice, nice to have that experience, the LNP, for the LNP. Nice to have that experience and then to cancel it and then launch the M two to what councillor Murphy has described as a turn up and go service. That's what he said at the opening of his contribution, a turn up and go service. What we do know from the running schedule is that it's running on the existing, the existing Route sixty-six timetable. So if that was turn up and go, if the new metro buses are running on the exact same timetable as the previous service, that was turn up and go. So why did we need to go through all of this pain and cost and the charade of the Metro? If according to, I'm sure he misspoke, but if according to councillor Murphy, the Metro, M two Metro service is an exact replacement with slightly increased capacity of an existing service and nothing else, and nothing else. It's been interesting to read some of the reporting of the Metro, of the launch of the Metro, some people's experiences and some reporting there. I read in a news article that said Brisbane Metro is just a very long bus that will replace the current buses on the city's iconic busways. Carandale Heights man Bennett Brett told reporters he was disappointed to learn the new Metro is just a new bus that can bend both ways. Now they want to cram two hundred and fifty of us in one bus. Imagine if he crashed a thing, it'd be like stomping on the end of a tube of toothpaste. Now, that was the potato advocate. I know that's satire. I know that's satire. But, but some of those sentiments that you're seeing in satirising this whole experience of the so-called Brisbane Metro from twenty sixteen right through to twenty twenty five and maybe twenty twenty six, we don't know, or come to that in a moment, in the confusion between councillor Murphy and the part-time Lord Mayor's timeframes about which quarter, which part of the Metro are going to launch. But I thought Corey Oates's experience is interesting too. Now, I know that councillor Murphy spoke, didn't, you know, at the media op, spoke about the experience of one former Bronco, a more recent former Bronco, Corey Oates, described his experience on Kiss FM last week. He'd never, I don't think.
Councillor, councillor Cassidy is having a floor.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah, yeah. So Corey Oates described his experience and I think he said he hadn't ever caught a bus before. I'm sure a team bus going down Caxton Street, but never caught a Brisbane bus before and obviously did that for the show. And not only did he get on the wrong bus because there was mass confusion about what services were going where at that launch, but he didn't know where the bus was travelling. He was fully had to stand in the bendy section. Felt so unsafe there that he chose to get off and catch an Uber back to the radio station. That was his experience of, of the Metro. So just some interesting, some interesting points there floating around in the world. But I'll pick up on a point that councillor Collier made about the cost of this. The published figure that councillor Collier used was one point five five billion. We've been reading through the Queensland Audit Office documents for this project and they suggest that it's now going to escalate again to one point six billion dollars when complete. Now, we know that this LNP regime went cap in hand to the federal government for an additional increase as well, despite, despite that contribution not proceeding for the Gabba Metro Station, having to get more money just to, just to plug the black hole that this is. We know that the Lord Mayor and councillor Murphy both talk about two different dates for the rest of the launch of the Metro. Maybe one knows something more about the delays in the Adelaide Street Tunnel and the new City Hall Station than the other is letting on. We also know that with the expansion we're hearing about, the Brackenridge depot that was much talked about, is now going to be too far out of the system and is going to have to be moved. So we certainly haven't heard the LNP talk about that, another broken promise. But I just want to finish up on the, the term operational cadence that councillor Murphy used. That's LNP code.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired. Any further debate? Councillor Strong.
Wow, I would have thought being the, probably the biggest ticket item forever for this city, that there would be people on the other side wanting to get up and wax lyrical about the Metro, but obviously not. And of course, a lot of the councillors over the other side don't, don't have any benefit of the Metro in their wards. So they probably wouldn't want to get up and say anything because it'd be hard to justify it. But I'll, I'll be one of those that stands up and says, well, the Metro, which is, which is going to those, those, those locations north and south, but there's nothing for the west. The west has been left out again. I mean, all I gained out of the Metro is one more bus service for the Glenalla High School in Glenalla Road, right? And they're very pleased about that, by the way. They're very happy about that because they can now bus their kids up to a bus interchange at Anala to go home, right? Which is, it was a bit of chaos there. So that was something good that Translink did on the bus review. So I just wanted to make mention of that. But, you know, as, as our leader of the opposition shed and, and, and of course our deputy, the, the blowout from the nine forty-four through to the one sixty now it seems to be, I, I just wonder if it's going to end there. And of course, we're not counting on the running costs that, that we didn't account for to run the Metro, you know? We went cap in hand with the last day government saying, oh God, help us, you know, we, we just don't have the money. And it was some phenomenal amount of money that it's going to cost to continue to run the Metro, even a brand new service, right? So you wouldn't think you'd have a lot of maintenance costs initially, but I don't know, maybe there is. I'm not an engineer. I don't know what the, the maintenance cost is to maintain something that is battery operated. And, but it might, you would think it wouldn't cost all that much, but there you go. It obviously does. And with no talk about that, the running cost and being able to afford that over the last ten years. It just seemed to be, when crunch time happened, it's, we don't have the money. So I don't know. Councillor Murphy, I know this is his pet project and it wasn't the only councillor to be his pet project, but certainly he's grabbed it by both, both arms, both hands and, and waxes lyrical about it. But you wonder if it's going to be a millstone at some stage as well, which it's probably already becoming that. Again, none of my residents, when I talk to them, when they talk about Metro, which isn't quite often, by the way, because they, they have no need of it and they aren't interacting with what's rolled out so far on a network. I mean, probably the only comments that we get is the having to get off one bus onto another bus, even though it's a very long bus, it's still a bus. It looks good, I'll give you that. It looks good. It, it looks like a Metro, should look. But of course, a Metro is an underground train. If you look up the definition of a Metro, it's an underground train. And there is only about two hundred metres of tunnel, whether it's underground that I'm aware of, that we, we constructed. Took a very long time to, to build that, I suppose, at two hundred metres. Maybe Campbell should have been the, the mayor. Maybe he would have got it done quicker, being a good old engineer, army engineer. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Maybe he should have been the project manager there. But anyways, he wasn't and, and there was probably a few issues, you know, with, with tunneling. There's always issues with tunneling, I suppose. Anyways. With some of the other stuff. Yeah, the, the capacity always, always really astounded me. I, I was looking at that, I was looking at the file tape that the Lord Mayor was, you know, with the launch and everything. He was sitting there in a short sleeve shirt, you know? He never wears a cut anymore. It's always a short sleeve shirt. I'm a man of the people, you know? Yeah, anyways, and he was talking about it in favourable terms, obviously. And I was looking at the, he must have been sitting at the front, the first section. And we're looking straight down to the other two sections. And I was counting the seats available to people because it was, looks like it was fully configured just for seating. But my understanding is to get a hundred and fifty or a hundred and seventy people on, on any of those three sections, you really got, it's mostly standing room, right? It's mostly standing room. And unsafe standing room for some, if they're on the bendy bits, which I haven't had that experience yet. I, I was on a bendy bus some years ago that we already have, right? Those cordial type ones, bendy bus. And it does feel a little bit funny. But anyways, that was, it was.
Councillor Strong, your time has expired. Any further debate? Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. And I rise to speak on this subject as well. The Metro bus for my community means less services. It actually means a cut in services. And so that one point six billion dollars we've spent on this busway not only means we're doing less infrastructure in the suburbs, my understanding is we're also going to give that asset or gift that asset to the state government, hand them the problem. But we're left with the debt. I suppose the big thing for me in relation to Metro, and the Metro ties in with the bus review, is that for the bus review, it was going to be a bus review for the whole city, but then it became a bus review for the south side. For me, means that we're seeing cuts to services in Rockleigh, Archerfield, Acacia Ridge, Durack and Maruka. And I know councillor Johnston, in her areas, has numerous suburbs that are also, because of the Metro, having cut services. So at a public meeting last week with about thirty residents, and they're wanting a bus service that connects them Durack and Dunadella and those areas, Polara, with the Oxley train station. Makes perfect sense. Should be there.
Used to be one.
We should have that. So yes, it was cut by Campbell. It should be there. But those residents can't get it. And for me, it's just embarrassing to tell them the story of the Metro. To tell councillor Murphy, all your, through you, Mr Chair, all your grand stories about these lovely bridges we're building. And I say, gee, in City Hall, you know, they talk about how great, we're, we're building another bridge. We're, we're doing a Metro programme. We're doing all this great stuff for the inner city. Like you can walk from Kangaroo Point into the city and buy your cafe latte. But your people out there in Durack, in the nursing home, we're doing nothing for you. In fact, we've cut what we're doing for you. And the people at Oxley, we've cut what we're doing for you. So that is my experience of this Metro programme. I think it's farcical. I don't think it's integrated and I think it's been a great loss for the people in the suburbs. I don't think, and I know, once again, I know what you discuss, I know what goes on in your little groups. I know there are councillors over on that side of the chamber who are not happy with the reduction in services they're getting. Would they speak up in this room? Of course not. Of course not. They've beaten up. They're not going to speak up in this room. But they are unhappy with what is being delivered by this council in the suburbs. And I would say to those councillors, speak up. At least speak up in your party room and have a say because at the moment, you've got some really crazy people run the show who think that the city is the only place that matters. The inner city is the only place that matters. And still to date, I haven't seen from the slasher deputy mayor, any figures to prove that all the money is spent in the suburbs. Because my experience is it's not spent in the suburbs and anyone who looks at the city knows it's not spent in the suburbs. But I look forward to that calculation being tabled in this chamber so that it can be scrutinised. It can be scrutinised. So this, you know, the, the money, the waste, this programme has just been really sad for the city. It's, it's taken the city in the wrong direction. It hasn't produced good results for the city and as of yet, it still hasn't delivered results for our residents. Thank you.
Any further debate councillor Adams?
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. Look, I have to stand and talk about my ward and the Metro, which surprisingly is in the suburbs. But then councillor Howard's ward also has suburbs, even though she happens to be in the inner city. But this false narrative that is continually run about the suburbs and the inner city, I'm a bit. and the inner city, I'm a bit worried that councillor Griffiths is actually starting to believe his own bollocks, because he's quite passionate about it, but he is so absolutely wrong when it comes to.
Point of order.
Just to seek your ruling, is the term bollocks an appropriate term to use in the council chamber? I'm sure we all understand what the colloquial meaning of that term is.
Well, may I remind all councillors to use the right words at your speeches?
Thank you.
Councillor Adams.
I think he's beginning to believe his own falsehoods when it comes to his narratives, because the money spent in the suburb is clearly there. I am very worried that councillor Griffiths is so very upset at how well we get on this side, that he can't do anything but talk about how well we don't get on, because it obviously doesn't happen over there, that is clear. The deputy mayor reminded us of their former deputy leader who couldn't get out fast enough, and she's trying in the federal government, well done with that with elbow, not that she's going to get there. But my ward is in the suburbs, and I would like to stand and talk about, as a backbencher, how excited my residents are around M2 coming out through to Eight Mile Plains. They're actually extremely jealous that M1 got up there first of all, but we understand why, because Beranda train station, not Beranda, yeah, Beranda train station, need a lot of work, and we can clearly see that when we travel on the buses, and I travel on the buses regularly, Beranda's had a lot of work done, it is so close. But if you're on the south side, there has been changes to the network, and again, the falsehoods from the narrative from councillor Griffiths and other south side, southwest councillors about cuts to trips is just wrong. There are 160,000 new trips per year on this new network. Are there changes? Absolutely. Are old routes being replaced with new routes? Absolutely. But that is not a cut, and again, thank goodness, that team on that side has no way to put their hands on this budget, because councillor Strong said, oh, it must cost a bit of money to actually run it, we've never seen how much it costs to actually run it. It's in the budget book and has been for many, many years. Under Programme Two, am I getting it correct? Programme One, thank you councillor Murphy, I've been focusing on Programme Seven for many years. Under Programme Run, councillor Colly scoffs that I don't know if it's Programme One or Two, and I doubt councillor Strong could name any of those programmes.
Councillors, councillor Adams having the floor, please keep quiet while listening to other councillors speaking.
So in my ward, for example, the 189 and the 179 have been changed, there's a P183 now, it is different, the 172 is different, it truncates at a different spot.
Point of order.
Point of order.
It can be misrepresented.
Noted.
You can check the hand side, councillor Strong, he said, I guess it costs money to run it, but I don't know how much. The changes, the changes.
Councillors.
I'm not listening to the rude interjections from the floor, because the falsehoods we just heard from them are outrageous. The changes that we've seen on the network are changes for the better use. People don't like change, we understand that, to call them cuts is just political falsehoods. And as for standing room only, now I'll give councillor Strong one thing, he said, well, they look nice, they look like a metro. They do, because they are a metro, and he says, but I think a lot of people have to stand up in them. I don't know if councillor Strong's been overseas any time recently, or even to the tram.
Councillor Cassidy.
Not on the ratepayers' dollars, on the trams down in Sydney, on the G rail down in the Gold Coast, people stand. That is how you get your capacity. That is how you get your capacity. And yes, I did go to Paris as the Olympic Committee Chair and looked at their metro, and standing capacity is very, very important and will be on this project as well, extremely important on this project. 69% of residents travel on public transport on a bus and what will soon be a metro across two lines. We have delivered this in half the time that they still haven't delivered the Cross River Rail. In half the time that they still haven't delivered the Cross River Rail. And councillor Griffiths whinges about buses not going to trains, which is a state government responsibility, but why would we bother when the trains for the Cross River Rail isn't running yet? So they can jump up and down as much as they like, but they have no clue, and I welcome it and can't wait for it to come to the M2.
Any further debate? Oh, sorry, councillor Strong, your misrepresentation.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Chair. Listen, I didn't say that, in my remarks, I didn't say that the administration didn't know how much it was going to cost to maintain. I basically said that they didn't tell us how much it was going to cost, and it wasn't in the budget.
Any further debate?
Point of order. Yeah, thanks, thanks, W. Just for councillor Adams' benefit, the M2 is launched, it's the M1 you're waiting for.
That is not point of order. Are councillor Murphy right of reply?
Wow, well, thank you very much, Deputy Chair, there's a lot to unpack there. Look, let's just start right at the top, where councillor Griffiths left off, I know he's left the chamber now, but he said, well, people are upset with the cuts in my community, and I actually don't see that reflected broadly amongst the other Labour councillors or the Greens councillors. That's because councillor Griffiths has no idea what the new bus network is, and he hasn't the entire eight years of Brisbane Metro. I don't think he's actually looked into it, I don't think he's read anything about it, I think he actually knows nothing about Brisbane's new bus network, because if you look, we have 160,000 new services across Brisbane's new bus network, we have five new routes, we've got 12 suburban routes that have been redesigned, we've got 12 routes combined for greater efficiency, three routes which have been divided, there's only three routes that are removed, and all of those routes have other routes over the top of where they go. So, and this is not including all of the parts of the network that are getting increased frequency or span of hours as well. There are no cuts as a result of this network, that's why the community supports this network, that's why the community has supported this council. Three elections now on Brisbane Metro, they go and get the lesson, they never learn, they keep opposing Brisbane Metro, they keep talking it down, and, you know, well, the result is in the pudding. Now, a couple of things, got to move quickly here, councillor Colly said, well, how hard is it to run buses? Yeah, it's actually a lot harder than it looks, councillor Colly, and that's why they keep putting us in, not you, because every time they take election policies on public transport to election, it's things like fare-free Fridays and, you know, half-price fares and things like that. They actually haven't come up with a coordinated, integrated transport policy for the city ever since councillor Cassidy has been leading that team. Now, they've criticised the fact that the project has changed, they've criticised the fact that the project has changed. Why has the project changed? Because it's gotten better and better and better. We moved from diesel to electric, okay? We moved from an underground station that would have broken the budget to a above-ground station which has capacity to grow, and we moved it because the Labour Party, Mark Bailey, opposed it for 18 months, and Jackie Tradt wouldn't let us build an underground station. So, you know, wherever we've had to be flexible and change the scope of metro, we've done that, but we've done it with the ratepayers and the passengers' interests at heart. Now, councillor Cassidy, wow, this was quite an extraordinary bow to draw, because we had Darren Lockyer open the metro, he had to get his own champion, Corey Oates, and he's trying to compare Corey Oates to Darren Lockyer. Did everyone hear that? Did everyone hear what he was doing there? He said, okay, but hold on, it gets better. It wasn't just the direct comparison, he didn't even want to name Darren Lockyer, another Broncos, oh, another Broncos guy you had there, whatever, but we had, but Corey Oates tried to catch a bus, so hold on. And in, and I'll tell you what happened, because councillors might not know what happened, so Corey Oates did a Kiss FM challenge to try and catch public transport, and they gave him the challenge, they said, you've got to catch the triple one, you've got to catch a triple one from Garden City into the CBD. And he said, I don't even know, I only learned the alphabet a few years ago, I'm going to struggle with that, and he was being funny, and it was funny, and he couldn't do it, okay? What the hell does that have to do with Darren Lockyer? And, I mean, and the metro, the triple, the triple one? The metro too is not even on the triple one. So I don't know what that was, I thought it was funny, but, you know, I didn't think it was particularly relevant. Now, but I did see, I now know where councillor Cassidy got the idea to walk around the city trying to find Exhibition Station from Victoria Park. He watched the Corey Oates video, trying to find the bus, and he thought, this is really good social media, that's what I'm going to do. And so, and so, that's what he did, that's where he got the inspiration. But I tell you this, councillor Cassidy, Corey Oates, his video was very funny, and your video, you know, it was very hot out there, and the residents that you had with you, they didn't seem very much into it, so you'll have to find some better stooges next time, councillor Cassidy, because whoever Corey Oates had with him, that was very funny, that was very engaging, I enjoyed it a great deal. Now, also councillor Cassidy, you keep talking about a tunnel collapse, you keep talking about tunnel collapse in the metro tunnel, now, there was no tunnel collapse, okay? We found a void, we found a void underneath the ground, sometimes when you're tunneling, you find a void. There's no collapse, you find a void, that's where there's nothing there, okay? And then sometimes, things sink behind the void, but it wasn't a tunnel collapse, and that's, that's an insult to those experienced tunnellers, there was no collapse, I totally disagree, it was a void, we found the void, tunnel's going great, metro's going great, I commend the motion of the chairman.
I put the Transport Committee report to the vote. All those in favour say aye? Those against say no? The ayes have it.
Division.
Division. Division called by councillor Strong, seconded by councillor Cassidy. Eyes to my right, nose to my left, please ring the bell. Clark, please read the result.
Mr Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 23 in favour.
The motion has passed. Councillor Wines, Infrastructure Committee report, please.
Thanks, Mr Chair, I move the report, the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 4th of February, 2025, be adopted.
Seconded, Mr Deputy Chairman.
It was moved by councillor Wines, seconded by councillor Toomey, not the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting, dated Tuesday 4th, February 2025, be adopted. Is there any debate, councillor Wines?
Yeah, thanks Deputy Chair, I just wanted to make a couple of comments about what was presented to councillors in that presentation, so councillors were showing a range of uses for recycled materials. Now, I know that it's something that councillors hear from me every 18 months or so, but it is something that is important and that I am proud of that we do. I also note that City Standards also does quite a bit of work in this space as well. So I just thought I'd bring along a couple of examples of what the sorts of things we have here. So crushed rubber here, which is crummed tyre rubber, is actually used as a binding agent inside of a number of our roads, and so we need to use different types of asphalt, use fire or 10% in type two asphalt, but 15% in type three, and it is an excellent binding agent, that's motor vehicle tyres, not heavy vehicle tyres, which I find that that's an interesting distinction. Also, I know councillor Toomey raised that he believes anecdotally that when you use crummed rubber, the road is quieter. I will, I will, I have no reason, but not bouncier, and I accept, I will accept his advice on that. So we have two different types of crushed glass, and so crushed glass is a sand substitute. And the committee heard an interesting point, which I think councillors might be interested in, and that is, that crushed glass, since the large-scale container return scheme has become available, has actually become less available to council as an alternative, that there are industries that are taking vast sums of crushed glass away rather than allow us to be able to use it, which I found fascinating, that the fact that the more glass there is, there are more markets available, rather than it's more available to us. So, but that being said, we do do a great deal of work with our own materials, and we are also collecting our own glass from time to time, and also reclaimed asphalt. So asphalt has an ability to, when it's collected, when we scour it, as we heard in the earlier, excuse me, the earlier debate today about profiling, we keep the bitumen and then we then reuse it. The problem is, is that eventually it becomes smoother and it loses its sort of viscosity, and once it becomes too smooth, we can't use it anymore, but that's recycled asphalt. For the council's interest, reclaimed asphalt, this product, typically 15 to 30% of all of our pavement surfaces are made from recycled pavement. The crummed rubber product is anywhere between 4 and 20%, depending on application, so we've been improving over time. There was a question also taken on notice last week about, which I was able to answer this morning, about how much of our product that we dig up do we recycle? And the answer is almost all of it, depending, of course, conditional to what I said before, that the quality of its use remains, but we use almost everything, we take it to one of our centres, we process it and then return it, because it's a lot better for our organisation to be able to reuse these materials than to find them brand new over and over again. It is something that's important to this council, it's something that I, that's important to our infrastructure area, and I hope that all councillors in the committee appreciate the presentation and also the opportunity to review these, they'll be behind me if anyone wants to have a look at them, it is kind of interesting, I look forward to further contributions.
Any further debate? Councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, just, this is an interesting and important topic, and we have to support the work that goes into this, I just want to check that councillor Wines has an issue sometimes with the different versions of documents he's working from when he introduces items, so I just wonder if we could, we could just check whether this is actually the right one this week, because it is important to debate these properly. I don't know if it's version one or version two, if it's the same document which was afforded to us, or whether it was a mystery officer that appeared and gave him a document, so just whether you could just double check that, Deputy Chair.
Any further debate? Councillor Strong.
Oh, no, I'm up. No, I just thought there would be, one of my fellow committee members from the other side would get up, councillor Toomey or councillor Marks, to talk about this very important recycling, recycling issue, which is, which is quite, quite an achievement actually by councils, not just this council, but other councils around Australia. And I would suggest that most community members don't know what we do, we recycle anything other than the stuff they put in the recycle bins, and then they probably don't know where it goes into, right? And I think maybe there's some education here that we should, we should be doing to let people know when they're driving on that road or walking on that footpath, right? That there's a lot of recyclable material in that. What I didn't know, of course, is that all concrete is recycled, which is terrific when you think about it. It was maybe invented by the Romans, but we're still using it today, hopefully it's a little bit better quality, but who knows, the Romans were really good. But it's an amazing material that can be recycled a number of times, I don't think we were told how many times that is, it's the same with asphalt, although I do remember back in the Field Services Day, which was City Standards now, or just City Standards now, that we were told that, I think about 10% was recycled into new, into new road resurfacing, 10% of the percentage of the new material with the old material was about 10%. And I think Adelaide actually was a much higher percentage back then, something like 30 and 40%. And I did ask the question back then, so why is Adelaide so much further advanced than us? And they said, well, we're cautious on how much we put in, we don't want our roads to fail, so that's why we put in the 10%. So, I don't know, that may have increased, it may have increased. I think councillor Wines saw me today, it was between fifteen and thirty percent, depending upon the application, right, that it's being used for, which he's just talked about today. And also that, that crummed rubber as well. And if you like, a lot of other councillors here, there's a lot of dumping of tyres recently, especially out my ward, turning up everywhere, sometimes on council land and sometimes not. But honestly, if the more we can recycle that and make it into the crummed rubber, maybe people won't dump tyres, right? Maybe they'll actually go to someplace where council can recycle from, I suppose, rather than having to dump them. I know council does charge so much per tyre when it's taken off to the recycled centre and maybe, maybe because we're using so much of that crummed rubber, maybe we, we shouldn't actually charge for, for depositing a tyre in a refuge, in a refuge facilities. Maybe that, maybe that could be a little bit of an initiative to try to decrease the, the dumping of tyres and, and it's just, it's just, there's just been a huge break out in my ward and I don't know if other ones, other people are experiencing that. As I said before, all concrete is re- is recycled, fully recycled, which is quite amazing when you think about it. Now, of course, other things that are recycled, wood, and I forgot about the wood, when you brought it up, woods recycled into chips and things like that, which can be used in playgrounds, although soft fell is, is something that my residents prefer. Not that, not that some, some of the chip type of material used in soft fall isn't okay, but they don't like it because of the potential hidden things in there, like needles and things like that, where soft fall, soft fall, the rubberized soft fall is something that they prefer, because at least it's easily to, easily able to be seen, right? And they also feel that when the kids come off the monkey bars or whatever they call that, the climbing, the climbing frames, that happens from time to time, that there's not too much injury to their child, or even to themselves if they're, if they're climbing with the child. And I do have some of those big climbing frames in my ward and it's just not all kids up there either. The percentages, what percentage is used? I think, as I say, we covered off on that. And I think it's, I just think, I've had a couple of these presentations over the years and I think this is probably the best one, the most complete. I did have a few questions for councillor Wines and he was able to answer those, those today in, in committee. So I do appreciate that.
Councillor Strunk, your time has expired.
Thank you Chair.
Any further debate? No further debate, councillor Wines write off reply.
Yeah, thanks Mister Deputy Chair, and I recognise the contributions, in particular councillor Strunk, and I appreciate his comments. We'll defend us against the comparison with the Romans, the Romans didn't have heavy vehicles, the Romans didn't drive a lot of cars. So that is one of the reasons why our cement doesn't last as long as their cement. But some of their, some of their techniques and their concepts are still used today and it is, but we do work to incrementally improve our techniques over time. In response to councillor Cassidy's comments, all I can say is there's no one better at recycling than the Labor councillors here in Brisbane. They, they took a product and councillor Cassidy smashed, and we had him smashed up in twenty twenty to a, into tiny little pieces, they put him back together, they presented him to the public again in twenty twenty-four, where he was thrashed once again. And I look forward to Labor councillors putting councillor Cassidy back together again and him being pummeled one more time in twenty twenty-eight.
I now put the Infrastructure Committee report to the vote. All those in favour say aye?
Aye!
Those against say no? The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Strunk, seconded by councillor Collier. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Please ring the bell. Please read the result.
Mister Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being twenty-three in favour.
The report has passed. Councillors, please return to your seats. Councillor Allen, City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee report.
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Collier.
Can I ask that item B be taken in seriatum for voting and debate?
The Chair has to move the report first. Yep, councillor Allen.
Thank you Mister Deputy Chair, I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday the fourth of February twenty twenty-five be adopted.
Seconded.
It was moved by councillor Allen, seconded by councillor Wolf. Now the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting dated Tuesday fourth February twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-five be adopted. Councillor Collier.
Point of order, yeah, thank you. Can I ask that item B be taken in seriatum for voting and debate?
Item B.
Yeah, voting, voting in debate, yeah, thank you.
Councillor Allen, item A please.
Thank you Mister Chair, before moving to the committee report, I did want to briefly touch upon councillor Cassidy's rambling and convoluted contribution to the E and C debate earlier. And in particular, he made a point amongst all that, he touched on housing of course. Now, I did want to point out some quick facts from twenty twenty-four. The South East Queensland Regional Plan intends for Brisbane to deliver two hundred and ten thousand odd houses by twenty forty-six, so roughly eight thousand homes a year. Last year, council approved eleven thousand nine hundred and twenty-four new homes. So we are well in advance of the approvals required under the South East Queensland Regional Plan. Now, the trick happens when you actually have to build these things and that's the difficult part of the market at the moment. So I'm not sure that councillor Cassidy's suggesting we should get into the construction game, but nonetheless, we're, well, maybe he is, because you know what that would do? That would help his mates in the CFMEU! And, and wouldn't that go well for council? But anyway, I'll move back to the report now. Very quickly, the item A was a presentation on the inner-city affordability initiative, car parking. We progressed that initiative last week. The initiative is all about reducing car parking requirements in areas close to transport and this in turn will lead to a reduction in the cost of inner-city apartments. Now, we've certainly heard from industry experts that the supply of underground or podium-based parking in new high-rise buildings can exceed a hundred thousand dollars per parking space and that clearly, that's an expensive proposition and it adds to not only the, the time it takes to build a high-rise development and then coupled with the costs and the extended time that they've got to carry debt and things, it definitely leads to an outcome where the cost of new apartments is exacerbated by the increase in the costs associated with that parking. So we did community consultation last year, eighth of October to the fifth of November, we had ninety submissions, those submissions were reviewed. Based on those reviews, we extended the city core and the city frame parking areas a little bit. In particular, we captured the state government's Willing Gaba PDA area, which already has city core parking rates and we reflected that in our city core rates. Also, we pushed out to some of those other areas like Tawong and Buranda, where they've got very good public transport and where reduced parking rates would make sense. So the reality is that if we can put pressure, downward pressure on housing prices and that we can increase supply through the other initiatives we're pursuing, we can bring about a downward, downward pressure on prices. And we did this in two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, when there was a very significant supply of apartments and the result was downward pressure. So we're going to continue to do whatever we can to increase supply, whether that's through incentives, whether it's through parking initiatives, to try and drive down the cost of housing, but also to increase the quantity of housing and I touched upon that earlier. Item B, were two petitions requesting...
It's taking seriatum, so just item A. Any further debate on item A? Councillor Strunk.
Thank you Chair. In regards to this, this amendment, again, the administration keeps talking about how much cheaper it is going to be for buyers of these, of these apartments. And I, I respectfully disagree. I think the market will, it will, it possibly will happen a reduction in price off the floor plan on, on new builds, because it's all about the new builds, of course. And I think that will be current for a little while, but eventually the markets and the developers will eat into that savings that they had by not having to build an extra car park or so. Certainly, we, 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 we support it simply because there'll be more stock, more stock built. And this is so important to our city today, and not just to our city, but other cities and, and right around the country. People need to be able to live somewhere, close, hopefully close to where they work, maybe hopefully close to where they have relatives for support. And, and I'm sure South Brisbane and other areas that are captured by, by this new, this new plan will benefit. But it's really, going forward, going forward, it's really going to be the haves and the have-nots in respect to whether you have enough parking or you don't have enough parking. And I really feel for the people that buy in, because yes, they buy in and they, it's upfront, this is what you get, this is what you're buying, there's no, you know, shell game here. But what else is being cut is those guest parking bays, those guest parking spaces, right? So that's being limited, that's being cut back as well. I don't think there was ever enough of those anyways. You know, if you wanted to have a little bit of a party, you know, with two or three friends that maybe were all driving, maybe they shouldn't be driving, but they do, maybe they're coming from a fair, a fair distance away. I don't think the, the on-street parking is not going to make up for what is not included in the, in the development. And, you know, it doesn't take many get-togethers in these developments to take up all that excess guest parking and there's, and there's going to be a lot less of that now, a lot less of that now and it's, I think it's a shame. The other thing about not having a car available to you at a, at any given time is that it really restricts your movements unless you're very, unless you plan things very well, to be able to pop off, to, to, to have a vehicle that's available to you to pop off and visit a friend that's maybe sick in hospital or something like that, or, or, or just are having issues and, and they don't live close to where you live. They, you know, maybe they live at Zilmia or somewhere like that. And so you always have to be cognisant of the fact that you, your, your movements will be restricted because there's only going to be one car in the family and that car could be at a place of work through the day or at night time for that matter. And so I just think it's, it's going to be the haves and the have-nots in a lot of respects. And I think the, I think the consequences, intended or otherwise, are there for, for everyone to see. And there may be some debate in this chamber in a ten years' time saying, why did we adopt that policy? There's been a lot of unintended consequences here that we didn't really think long and hard enough. We based on experiences maybe from overseas, overseas cities that seemed to cope well with that. But I think Australia and Brisbane is a bit different than a lot of other places. We are a car city, we can't get away from that. It was the way we, it was the way we developed, it's the, it's the history, you know, going back a hundred years. And, and I don't think we'll ever get past that in any, in any, any way. We'll always have a vehicle, whether it's powered by petrol or electricity, to get us around. It'd be a lot more eco-friendly if it's powered by electricity, of course. And also, we don't really, we don't really actually mandate, which I think we should mandate, like, you know, charging, charging bays in, in these garages, in these car parking areas that we actually require to be built, right? Because it's really expensive to re-engineer all that. But anyways, I, I digress. I just want to say that, yeah, there's...
Councillor Strunk, your time has expired. Any further debate? Councillor Cassidy?
Thanks very much Deputy Chair, rise to speak on item A, which is the presentation about the policy change we debated last week. And pick up on what councillor Strunk was saying, that's the sentiment, you know, we, we have and, and the, the challenge of which, you know, we went through in making a decision about supporting the policy, which we ultimately did, as we, as we discussed last week. But there are an awful lot of unintended consequences from policy changes and I think in some cases, what might present as unintended sometimes actually are intended consequences that aren't often spoken about. But I just sort of, I pick up on councillor Allen's comments in saying basically what, what policy levers we are seeing being pulled by the LMP, all that are available to the LMP council and according to him, the, the LMP are doing everything they possibly can to address this problem, similar to the policy levers that were pulled back in what resulted in an oversupply of units back in twenty fifteen and the resulting decrease in unit value, which saw increasing affordability for people seeking to get them. So I assume that is, that is the, the end aim of this policy and of the infrastructure charge discount policy and other policies in making the, both the rental price and the purchase price of units cheaper, driving down the value of units, which, you know, for people seeking a home, as we said last week, is something that we support in this current environment. But my message to councillor Allen through you Deputy Chair is you better be right. This will be your legacy in council and the LMP's legacy when we do look back in ten years' time, as we can now, back to twenty fifteen and saw it resulted then. When you say these are the only levers that are available to be pulled, you want to hope they work. Because if they don't, what we will see as we see the back end of the Olympic Games and Paralympic Games and going on to a bright new future here in Brisbane as a city that's on the world map, if the result of that is even more unattainable and more unaffordable housing options for people here in Brisbane and people who seek to move to Brisbane, then that would be a very, very bad outcome. We know that the incentives are strong for developers and the argument that we mounted last week and the plea that we put on the table here again today is to have the engagement of councillor Allen and the LMP administration to actually have a mechanism to measure the success of this. So not waiting ten years and looking back and saying, did it work or didn't it work? Measuring success as we go, whether it's development by development or suburb by suburb and, and at a city-wide level as well. You just take for instance the development at Tenerife that we had a presentation on this morning in the committee, the, the block land that's sandwiched between Bunnings, sorry, Newstead, not Tenerife, sandwiched between Bunnings, Newstead and, and the Mercedes-Benz building there, which we'll see, so three towers, twenty-eight storeys high, I think current zoning is six or something. So this is a big, a big development. That is going to be the beneficiary of two lots of policy changes that the LMP have brought in. It's going to be the beneficiary of an infrastructure charge discount of fifty percent. So we're going to see the, the cost to the developer be reduced by about four million dollars on the build and, and the, they'll have to obviously seek a change to their development application, but, but no, sorry, no, they won't, because council approved this based on a policy coming, that's right. We'll say, I don't know, this is actually a guesstimate, it was probably close, but just on the numbers of units and the mix of studio one, two and three-bedroom units in there, a couple of million dollars less in construction costs for not having the same level of car parking that they would have previously. So if we're looking at development like that, which promises to deliver hundreds of new dwellings of accommodation in an area that desperately needs them to drive down rental prices and purchase prices... prices and purchase prices, the developers have a very clear, have a very clear idea of what they are saving from these LMP policies. But we want the people of Brisbane to understand very clearly what that means for them. Housing is a human right, well, it certainly should be, and we certainly should have Counselor Allen advocating on that path. So what we say again is, is we supported this policy, and we want to make sure that it actually results in what you say it will, and there must be a mechanism to measure that.
Any further debate? Counsel Allen, right of reply.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Chair. Well, I was very pleased to hear Counsel Strunk weigh in with his very strong pro-car debate. And I guess living out in Forest Lake, that's probably a choice you can make, and that probably makes sense. But, you know, I'm not sure that that pro-car position will sit comfortably with his coalition of chaos partner, the Greens, but nonetheless, he's out there now with his pro-car agenda. The other thing I did want to point out was that if we weren't to bring about this car parking change, one thing we can definitely guarantee is that prices would continue to be higher. So the incentive will definitely give rise to a downward pressure on prices. If we'd left it in place, that was definitely going to lead to increasing prices on apartments. So, you know, you can't have it both ways. Now, the other thing too is there's market forces involved in any pricing of any product, you know, whether it's, you know, eggs or an apartment. So that needs to be taken into consideration. And ultimately, residents' housing choices will be a function of what they need to do around transport and cars. You know, I'm not expecting my son to, who's a tradie with a ute and a trailer, to suddenly want to live in Newstead. It's not the place for him. He can't accommodate his vehicle requirements. So that needs to be taken into consideration. To Counselor Cassidy's point, I'm very glad that the Labor Party supported this last week, but the reality is, people need to be able to make choices. They don't want to pay for car parks, they don't need, lots of people are making decisions that they don't want cars anymore. The most recent census indicated that more and more people are choosing not to own a vehicle, and so why should they pay for a car park? Now, the incentives that we've bought in over probably the last year and a half to two years are all designed to drive down prices and also to increase supply. It's no secret, as I pointed out earlier, we're continuing to approve developments and approve that latent supply in the market. But if it doesn't get built, it's no good to anyone. And so our incentives are designed to get these buildings out of the ground. Counselor Cassidy referenced a presentation in committee this morning. That site, that site has been a vacant site for sixteen years. And I would like to think that the incentives that we've put out there in the marketplace have contributed to this building being developed. Now, as he touched, there's three towers there, seven-hundred-and-fifty-odd units, two-thirds of them are billed to rent. So this is, and they're also studio one and two-bedroom apartments primarily. So this is clearly aimed at providing product that's in the cheaper end of the spectrum. They're not three and four betters, they are at the cheaper end of the spectrum, and there's a billed-to-rent option there. So ultimately, we are very, very confident that this is the right way to go, that we are seeing products that will be developed, that they'll be built. And the challenge for us as an administration is to continue to pull the levers we've got, and that's exactly what we're doing.
I'll now put item A of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee report to the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who can say no, the ayes have it. Counsel Allen, item B of the report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Chair. Item B was a, two petitions requesting council remove the heritage protection from Our Lady of Fatima Catholic College Hall located at 350 Mordama Road, Acacia Ridge. The church hall was erected around 1948 and comprises of three relocated World War II army huts. The building served as the church for the Acacia Ridge Catholic community until the new church was built in 1966. It also served as a temporary school for approximately 100 children, taught by Sisters of Joseph from St. Joseph's of Maruka, until the new school was built in 1971. The church hall was added to the heritage overlay in the city plan in July 2002, as the building meets the cultural heritage significance criteria through its historical and social associations with the local area and the Catholic community, and through rarity as a surviving example of repurposed World War II military huts. There have been multiple points of contact to council by parish representatives since 2022 on the issues in these petitions. Correspondence to the parish in 2022, 2023, and 2024 has provided consistent, detailed advice regarding the types of information required to support any council consideration of the parish request to demolish the hall. Although a complete removal of the heritage overlay is not supported, local heritage protections do allow for and support an adaptive reuse of the hall. The church may wish to consider applying for an adaptive reuse of the building and site, including potential relocation of the building elsewhere on the property to create more usable space. Council may also reduce the mapped curtilage of the local heritage place on the overlay. However, this would also require a major amendment to city plan. Mr. Deputy Chair, I'm pleased to update the chamber that officers have reached out to both the local councillor and members of the church to arrange a meeting to further discuss their options with regards to the local heritage listing, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Any further debate? Counsel Griffiths.
Oh, wow. It just gets better and better. Wow. So that was from Counselor Allen, for anyone who's following out there. Counselor Allen is the planning chairperson for the city, and I think one of his most famous quotes is, "Think of the poor developers." He tells us to think of the poor developers. He's certainly very pro-development. So let's have a look at this issue. It is right, I didn't support this petition as it stands here because of the information contained in this petition. And in fact, before I got this petition, I had an email reaching out from the offices, from the executive, saying, actually, councillor, we can meet with you and the church community about this issue. So I had one piece of correspondence from our executive team giving me one bit of information, and I shared that with the Catholic community out there, Our Lady of Fatima. And then I received this petition, which doesn't include that information. And this is, this is not uncommon in this council. I keep finding this happening all the time, where I'm given incorrect, wrong information. There is one huge communication problem up there in the bureaucracy in the executive team, and I just find it astounding that I get this petition that gives me a different direction to what they're offering. So can I just say, if you're going to do that, put it in the petition, include it in the petition, just like you had to add it on to the end of your speech rather than have it go through the petition, Counselor Allen. Just astounding that we have such a well-paid bureaucracy who can't competently give us correct information. This happens time and time and time again, particularly for opposition councillors. I hope that gets resolved at some point. In relation to this, the community came to me, the Catholic community came to me. Let's look at Acacia Ridge, because I know that the planning chair hasn't been out there, I know the Lord Men never goes out there, I know no LMP councillors go out there, I know no planning staff go out there. It's left alone. We cut the bus services to it, thanks, Counselor Murphy, but we actually don't go out there. Now, what we've got here is a building that is literally falling apart. You walk in it, it's condemned. It's propped up with bits of wood holding the sides on. The guttering's all falling off. You can fall through the floor. You can fall through the stairs as you go up. It is condemned. This is a no-brainer to take the heritage overlay off this. It is a no-brainer. I support it. Three-hundred-and-sixty-nine members of the community support it, the Catholic community support it. This is not a rich, inner-city yuppie church. This is a church that's serving the multicultural community, serving the indigenous community. It is not a wealthy, inner-city organisation. And what they're looking at doing is helping to run their school and helping to provide some community services. So what they're saying is realistic, it should happen, we need to remove, use the common sense and remove the heritage overlay off this, just like we did, like we were forced to do with the war workers' homes. Yes, tick, that was a win for the community, and tick, it was a bloody hard fight against the LMP. And this obviously is going to be another damn hard fight, and we'll have it, and we'll shine a spotlight on the stupidity that is Brisbane City Council and the way this organisation's run, and the stupidity-
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, Counselor Adams.
Again, Counselor Griffiths can say what he likes about the LMP administration, but to impugn motive on the bureaucracy who works so hard for us, I ask he withdraws the stupidity of the bureaucracy, please.
I think some people in bureaucracy certainly are at that level. I maintain that this is a really crazy, stupid decision, and I don't support it.
Counsel Griffiths, your time has expired.
I will be working with the community to highlight this stupidity.
Any further speakers? Counsel Strunk.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Listen, I listened very intently to Counsel Griffiths, and sometimes common sense should prevail.
Sometimes.
Sometimes. Now, I'm a great advocate personally for character and heritage listing. I wish I had some in my ward. I haven't got any, and I would just love it. And I'm so jealous when I go out to a number of wards, especially when you come into the city and just see those heritage-listed buildings that continue to be there all those years later after I arrived. And I go up and down the street, and I just see some of those buildings that are still there, and I just think, we're getting it, we're getting some of it right, we're getting some of it right. But sometimes we don't get it right. I mean, the Bellevue Hotel is a good example.
That was true. That was the LMP.
You know, it was a beautiful old thing. Anyways, but, you know, sometimes, sometimes if a building is so far gone and the cost of restoration, it would be really hard for that to be funded by struggling. And listen, most of our churches are really struggling for maintenance, right? Keeping that, the first thing is the roof, of course, the roofing fund, but they really are struggling, especially out in those lower socioeconomic areas. And I know you could sort of say the Catholic Church is very rich and all the rest of it, but-
Not all of it.
No. But, you know, we, there's only, we've only had one new Catholic church since 1956 built in Brisbane, and that was out at Flint Street, Richlands, the Vietnamese Catholic Church. Because they could afford to fundraise to help the archdiocese out, they have a congregation of two-and-a-half-thousand parishioners and growing. So they needed something that was almost cathedral seating, right? Which they, which they did. Now, a lot of our established churches, of course, are built in an era which is, lends us to beautiful immensity. Unfortunately, timber isn't usually one of the, one of the building materials. But really, it is, it's still character, it's still character, it's still character. And I was really sad to, you know, to think about that potentially going, but I could see the common sense. And I just wish the recommendation was, reflected that, as Counselor Griffiths said so eloquently. And it's, it's just, I just wish I had some of that in my ward, I really do, you know? But I don't have anything that's pre-47, and by a few years, a couple of years anyways. And it's just, it's just sad that that may no longer be in situ there. I hope, I hope maybe they'll move it somewhere else, and maybe someone else will do it up, who knows?
It might be council.
Well, that would be a great project for council. We need more council facilities. We had a meeting with some mentioned people today, thank you, Counselor Howard, and I'm sure they left something like that, because I know something like that exists in other areas, right? So anyways, I just wanted to lend my, lend my voice, or lend my, a few thoughts on this, on this important petition. I hope the, I hope the Fatima Congregation gets to go forward to what they're wanting to do, even though, you know, heritage listing is an important issue. Right from the time I became councillor, we were, we'd been fighting over pre-1911, pre-47 audits and things like that. So it's important, and I commend the Catholic Church for wanting to move forward and look after their parishioners. Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers? No further speakers? Counsel Allen, right of-
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the opposition councillors for their contribution on this particular item. I must say that Counselor Griffiths has mixed form on heritage. Those in the chamber might remember his contribution to the Maruka War Workers' housing estate debate, where when it first came to the chamber, he was fully in support, voted with us, yep, yep, it's all good. And then within months, he'd flip-flopped, and it wasn't good anymore, and he decided that that wasn't a line that he wanted to support. Now we have a situation where we've got a building that's genuine heritage-
Point of order, Counsel Griffiths.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
I note your claim.
That we've got a building that's got genuine heritage, it went on to the register over twenty years ago, the owner of a heritage property has a responsibility to maintain it. But what Counsel Griffiths is suggesting is, oh, look, the owners can just neglect it, and then in time, they'll get a demolition order to remove it. And thank you very much to Counselor Strunk for introducing the Bellevue Hotel, because if we follow the Labor Party's line on this, just let it fall down, any heritage building in the city, you can just let it deteriorate and fall down, and then somehow, you'll get an approval to demolish it. That's in essence what they're saying. So this particular building, it's been on the heritage register for over twenty years. We are looking to work with the owners to try and get an outcome here, but just the fact that a building's old or it's deteriorating doesn't extinguish the fact that it is a heritage-listed building, and the owners have an obligation to maintain it. So I think I'll leave it at that, but, you know, we have considered this closely, we are happy to work with the owners, but this notion that just because a building has got old and because it hasn't been maintained by the owners, doesn't mean you can just barrel in with the bulldozers and knock it over.
Counsel Griffiths, your point of misrepresentation.
Yes, I agreed with the counsel the building is old, but I certainly supported the community's efforts to remove heritage on this.
Now put item B to the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division has been called by Counselor Griffiths and seconded by Counselor Collier. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Please ring the bells. Please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being eighteen in favour and four against.
Motion is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Councillor Davis, Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting of Tuesday, 4th of February, 2025, be adopted.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Davis and seconded by councillor Marks that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 4th of February, 2025, be adopted. Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I go to my committee report, earlier in the meeting today, councillor Griffiths asserted that the $22 million Archfield Wetlands District Parkland project was wholly funded by the bushland preservation levy, and that assumption is wrong. In fact, half of the funding for this world-class facility in his ward came from LGIP funding. The rest was made up from the Oxley Creek Transformation Project budget. Now, it is true, it is true that a contribution from the bushland preservation levy is made each year to the Oxley Creek Transformation Project. But I would note that the levy is also used to manage, maintain and restore the condition of bushland. And so some of the funding could be directed to the preservation of the Archfield Parklands. Madam Chair, last week's committee presentation was on solar power on council and community facilities. Rooftop solar is the most cost-effective source of electricity, and it's a practical way to reduce our electricity consumption from the grid while at the same time providing ongoing savings in future operating costs. This in turn also helps to reduce council's carbon footprint. We have been realising these opportunities by steadily increasing our rooftop solar capacity over the last decade, and it now stands at over eight megawatts spread across three hundred and thirty sites. Council has solar systems on all of its bus depots, all of its environment centres, and all of its waste facilities. Madam Chair, these 21,000 solar panels spread across the length and breadth of our city contribute to more than thirteen gigawatt hours a year of electricity being produced, which is equivalent to the consumption of twenty-three hundred homes. And around nine and a half thousand tonnes of carbon emissions being saved annually, which is equivalent to three thousand cars being taken off the road. An exciting and innovative new example, Madam Chair, is that of the Kangaroo Point Bridge. Some forty kilowatts of solar power installed on the bridge have contributed to the excellent design rating from the Infrastructure Sustainability Council. The solar panels on the bridge provide both power for the bridge's lighting at night and shade during the day. Madam Chair, from the resource recovery centres to the new Brisbane Metro Depot, from libraries to sports club, the power from our solar arrays produces cost savings for both council and community groups. And this investment is just another way that the Shirena Council is working towards increasing our community to be clean and green and also delivering savings.
Further speakers? Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on the presentation about solar. And it was very interesting, one of the issues I raised was why don't we have solar on City Hall? Apparently it's because the trees are overshadowing City Hall, and that's why we can't put solar on the roof. But I went out and had a look from the shaded area on King George Square, and there are no trees overshadowing this magnificent building. So I'm not sure why the administration can't put solar panels on City Hall. Let alone, there's a whole structure out there in the hottest part of Brisbane, the frying pan out in front of City Hall, that could have solar all over it. It has no solar on it as well. We have no solar on that deck area. So it's amazing to get a presentation about what a great job we're doing.
Point of order. Point of order, councillor Marks.
Councillor Griffiths is misleading the chamber.
Councillor Marks, if you want to add to the debate, you can do so after councillor Griffiths sits down. Councillor Griffiths.
I look forward to that. I think it'd be amazing to put solar on City Hall. Actually do it. Not talk about it, not talk about what we're doing here or at that library, but talk about doing it symbolically, do it on City Hall. And do it on the huge area out there that we've had to build because we ripped all the trees out. That huge covered area out there because we, the LMP Campbell Newman decided that the place looked better as a parade ground than as a subtropical city. Put some solar panels on that as well. In terms of what councillor Davies said about the funding for that playground, what she has confirmed is $11 million of the bushland acquisition fund to buy bushland has been built on building a playground. She just confirmed of the 22 million, 11 million dollars of the residents. When they see bushland acquisition, what you should be seeing is a playground, a con job. What we have is the LMP con job.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor-
Relevancy to solar on council facilities.
Thank you, councillor.
I will come back to solar, other than to say, the challenge is out there. What are you going to do about, for the LMP? How about doing something significant with the space out the front of King George Square with City Hall, so they actually show that you're really interested in solar for the city, not just talking about it? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Marks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to add to the debate here about the solar panels, firstly by saying that council officers are doing an excellent job in this situation. All of our buildings and everything, they went through a process that has determined whether a building was even suitable for solar panels. Situations change. The Chair quite clearly said that the reason there are no solar panels on City Hall was not only because of the trees, but there's also a heritage issue. And there's also a great big dome on the top of this roof, which limits the space. Now councillor Griffiths, through you, Mr Chair, was said, he was misleading the chambers because he said there's no solar panels in King George Square. Councillor Strunk was very correct when he tried to interject to councillor Griffiths and tell him there are solar panels on the King George Square deck, and he was correct.
Further speakers? Councillor Strunk.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I was up on the deck with councillor Griffiths today, and we were having a look at that situation about solar panels on City Hall. Can't do it because of the trees. Well, there's only palm trees out there, and they certainly don't come even higher than the windows for the Lord Mayor's office. Anyways, so that was a really lame excuse, I thought. And now the dome thing, well, the dome only covers a portion of the building. Now, listen, they have solar panels. I think someone even said they have solar panels on the top of the White House. Jimmy Carter put them in, Lala Laker took them down, and I think they're back up. They haven't been taken down. Anyway, so with all the security issues with the White House, they could find place for solar panels, which I think is, we should be able to find them from here. But listen, in regards to solar panels on our buildings, right? Where my office is, we have the civic hall. Now, it doesn't have any solar panels, and the roof through the civic centre has just been renewed. So there's plenty of structural soundness up there for solar panels. And just looking at the write-up in regards to this, in regards to the presentation, only four libraries have solar. And we've got thirty-three libraries. Now, some of those libraries, of course, are in private property, so you'd have to get permission. But honestly, with a tenant like Brisbane City Council, I don't think a lot of private owners would have an issue with council saying, let us put up some solar, let us do the right thing and put up some solar panels, right? Now, I know, as I say, we have enough, how many gigs? I can't remember how many gigs, but I do remember the 23,000 homes. But if you equate that into actually how much that is, really, I have about 23,000 properties, or a bit less now, about 20,000 properties in my ward. And I've got a very small ward compared to, say, Maruka and some of those other wards that are much larger in physical size. So that's not a lot of Brisbane, you know? That's one suburb, well, sorry, six suburbs out of 180 or 200 suburbs, whatever it is in Brisbane. So now, the other thing I thought, yeah. The other thing I thought was that there was only two of our pools currently have solar. And I thought it would be much higher than that.
Yep.
Can't work that one out. I mean, it's, I mean, most people do a solar, some sort of a solar system to heat their pools in their backyards now when they're building new ones, you know? It costs a bit of money, right? But it saves you a bit of power, obviously. But I just think we have to do more and more. I mean, I put in, just put in some solar myself in my own house, about twelve and a half kilowatts, twenty-six panels. And then my service provider, electricity provider, cut the input tariff by half. I won't mention who they are, but they cut it by half as soon as I put them up. But I regretted that, of course. But I didn't regret the fact that I made the decision to try to do the right thing by the environment, also my hip pocket. But it was really driven more about the environment, really, than my hip pocket. But that was, that was something I factored in, of course, to my decision. You know, council has, the council is very large, and we have another, I'm sure, a number of buildings that could be solar-powered, solar-powered, which gives us buying strength. You know, people say, well, buy in bulk. Well, no, it just gives us the buying strength to go off to a provider or panel, to set up a panel of providers. If we, I'm sure we probably already have that anyways, to do a really good deal on most of our, most of our buildings that haven't been solar-powered. Now, a lot of the ones that haven't been solar-powered, they're under lease, right? By community groups and organisations, and they're supposed to do this work. Well, I think we should do it. I don't think the small community group, like the WASPs in my area, the small rugby union group that has a clubhouse that could benefit from solar, I don't think that they should be forced to do the right thing and have to pay 12,000 or 15,000 or 20,000 dollars, depending on how many panels they can put up. So I think there's a lot of organisations out there like that that have clubhouses under lease that we are not going to do because they are responsible for the clubhouse and everything except the structure itself.
Councillor Strunk, your time has expired. Further speakers? Councillor Davis, Roderick Pi.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. And another interesting contribution by councillor Griffiths, who wants us to waste ratepayer money on solar panels that won't work because it's symbolic. That's what we do now. We work out where we put our solar panels based on whether it's symbolic or not. Councillor Strunk, councillor, yeah. Councillor Griffiths, there are also structural constraints on this building when it was investigated for solar panels. There are also very tall buildings around here which tend to stop the sunlight from coming directly down on our symbolic City Hall. Councillor Strunk, I think, no, I haven't been to the White House, but I'm pretty sure there's not 50-story buildings around the outside of that either. So it's probably okay that they have solar panels on it. Madam Chair, this is a great programme that we run. It's great that Programme Three works with other programme areas on their projects to work out whether there's a cost benefit to putting solar on new builds and other infrastructure projects, and we will continue to do that. I would finally say, though, to councillor Griffiths, through you, Madam Chair, that his ridiculous assertions when it comes to how the Archfield Wetlands District Park was funded needs to stop now. He is peddling mistruths, he is making stuff up. The man is a great maker-upper of stuff.
One moment, please. Thanks, councillor Davis.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Okay, you can, you can tell us what your claim is now.
Yes, no, I just repeated the figures councillor Davis just gave the chamber, that half the money was from the bushland acquisition programme. The other half was from our infrastructure programme.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
I'm just claiming, just feeding back what councillor Davies just said.
Councillor Davis, your claim? Your claim of misrepresentation.
Oh, thank you. This is another assertion by councillor Griffiths. It's not what I said. He needs to listen more carefully, and again, stop making stuff up.
We'll now put the report to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
Division.
The ayes have it. Division called by councillor Strunk and seconded by councillor Griffiths. Please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being twenty-two in favour.
Motion is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Councillor Hutton, City Standards Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and it grieves me great delight to get to Programme Six, the City Standards Meeting, so I move the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on-
Point of order, councillor Collier.
Can I ask that all items be taken, serial item for debate and voting?
Yep, just, well, just second first, and then we'll go to you. Councillors, yep, okay, second.
Yes, second.
Great, so moved by councillor Hutton, seconded by councillor Adaman, that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 4th of February, 2025, be adopted. Councillor Collier.
Can I ask that all items be taken, serial item for debate and voting?
Thank you. Councillor Hutton, item A.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I will start with the wonderful work that our Community Conservation Partnership Programme does across our city. And we had a wonderful presentation in committee last week discussing all of the great things that they do. So this programme currently supports 8,100 volunteers and partners who work across 1,087 sites, covering more than 3,500 hectares of public and private land. Our Community Conservation Programme consists of three initiatives. Our Wildlife Conservation Partnership Programme, which focuses on habitat management on private land. Habitat Brisbane, which I'm sure many councillors in this chamber are very, very aware of.
Councillor Hutton, sorry, but we have reached the three-hour mark.
Oh, Madam Chair, can I just do one final shout-out to my favourite Habitat Brisbane, Wes? Thanks, Wes, love your work.
Thank you, councillor. Under the provisions of section 3513 of the meeting's local law on the expiration of the period allowed for debate of committee reports, I shall now put the motions to the meeting for the adoption of any committee report not yet voted upon without further amendment or debate. So firstly, we will put item A to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. Item B to the vote, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Item B is carried. Item C, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The item is carried, so it's item C carried. So we will now move to City Standards Committee report. Oh, sorry. Yes, Community and the Arts Report. And there's only item A on that, so we'll now put that to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it, report is carried. And finally, Finance and City Governance Report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it, the report is carried. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, I have a petition here from some residents.
No further petitions. Councillor Gibney, can I have a motion for the receipt of petitions, please?
Chair, I move that the petitions as presented-
Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Second.
It has been moved by councillor Gibney and seconded by councillor Strunk that all petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of an Office of the Independent Assessor or Councillor Ethics Committee order?
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order councillor Wong.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I seek to suspend standing rules in order to move a motion without notice about a matter not listed on the agenda in relation to a referral to the Office of the Independent Assessor, which council is required to deal with under the state government's model meeting procedure included within the meeting's local law.
Second it.
It has been moved by councillor Wong and seconded by councillor Adaman to suspend standing order. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Wong, can you please move your motion?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I move that as councillor Johnston has three orders of unsuitable meeting conduct issued within a twelve-month period at the council meetings of thirtieth April twenty twenty four, fifth November twenty twenty four, and nineteenth November twenty twenty four, and under section twenty-one ten of Meetings Local Law two thousand and one, the matter must be dealt with at a meeting of council. That council resolves to refer the matter to the Office of the Independent Assessor for assessment.
Second it.
It has been moved by councillor Wong that as councillor Johnson has three orders of unsuitable meeting conduct issued within a twelve-month period in the council meetings or at the council meetings of thirty April twenty twenty four, fifth of November twenty twenty four, and nineteenth of November twenty twenty four, and under section twenty-one ten of Meetings Local Law two thousand and one, the matter must be dealt with at a meeting of council that council resolves to refer the matter to the Office of the Independent Assessor for assessment, and seconded by councillor Adaman. Councillor Wong.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Well, council was required to include certain provisions from the state government's model meeting procedures, and incorporated these in last year's update, update to the meeting's local law. One of the matters council was required to include was that if a councillor has three orders of unsuitable meeting conduct within a twelve-month period, that the chair was required to deal with the conduct at a council meeting. As deputy chair of council today, I seek to ensure that this part of the model meeting procedure in the meeting's local law is adhered to, is adhered to by referring this conduct to the appropriate body, the Office of the Independent Assessor.
Further debate. Councillor Collier.
Yeah, thanks very much, Sharon. It shouldn't come to any surprise to this LNP regime that we won't be supporting this motion because it is, of course, based on biased and unfair chairing of council meetings that we have seen in repeated instances. You know, I have been a councillor in this place for just shy of two years, and from the beginning of my time certainly as councillor, and I know other councillors who have been here longer have experienced this behaviour too, there is systemic targeting of non-LNP councillors, and it is only the people whose behaviour, who is noted in the minutes for reprimand, are the councillors, of course, who are not in the LNP. I also note that I have witnessed, you know, personally, some terrible behaviour that has been engaged in with councillors from the administration, who's we have called out, we have asked for reprimand for, there have been disgusting slurs and name-calling repeatedly in this place, and they go unchecked and unreprimanded, and I don't think that that is acceptable. On this side of the chamber, we continue to attempt to bring this up. This is not about having a difference of ideology, this is actually just us attempting to call out very poor behaviour, but it's due to the LNP's bias of chairing these meetings that they do not get reprimanded, so we will not be supporting this motion today.
Further speakers? Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, I just want to get up and say that this is disgusting, this motion. I want to put it on the record, I've been here for twenty-two years, so I was here BC before Campbell, and this place operated very differently. And since Campbell Newman came on board with his LNP team, there's been, and particularly for any woman who spoke out on that team, there's been nothing but a vendetta against councillor Johnston. This is very political, this is not independent, this is about getting councillor Johnston. It's not about unsuitable meeting conduct, it's the fact that you don't like this councillor and you don't like what this councillor says, and yet this councillor's vote rockets up way above any of you could dream of. So I, I, I think this is about LNP bullying, I think this is about misusing a law that wasn't intended to be used this way. I know, because I've experienced it many times, and I've experienced it from LNP councillors, never from member of the public, never. So I just think what you're doing today, what the LNP are doing today, and I get it because there's a whole lot of council officers watching, and they're all the executive watching, and you're showing the power and the might and the intimidation you have to intimidate people from the opposition or intimidate people who differ from you. And you're sending that message right through the whole workforce. Well, that is wrong. That is wrong. That should not be happening. Councillor Johnston shouldn't have this done, she's been set up. Of course she's been set up. Councillor Adams is constantly on her feet, constantly yelling out, never gets a warning, never gets a warning. This is, this is, you know, this is just diabolical, what's going on here. It's a misuse of your majority, it's not the way the Act was intended to work. I've certainly made that representation to state, to the state when they reviewed the laws, councillor Johnston did, I don't know if any of you did. This is not the way it should be working. And for the LNP to politicise this and use this, which is what it's doing, what this council is doing is disgusting. And residents know it, and residents support councillor Johnston far more than they support any of you. This is wrong.
Further speakers? Councillor Chongwa.
Thank you, Chair. I also rise in, I'm as, as I'm a new councillor to this, this chambers, being about seven months in, and I am absolutely appalled by the bias and the abuse of power that we see here today. Councillor Johnston, I can see, is targeted and it's discrimination, and I also feel really disappointed that this is what I am witnessing every Tuesday when I come in, when, you know, we should be doing things that are practical and then support our community rather than doing something like this, which is completely shameful and, again, abuse of power. Thank you, Chair.
Any further speakers? Councillor Kim.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to put on the record that also as a new councillor as well, the only time that I've heard about something like this in relation to councillor Johnston and what the council was trying to do to her today was today. So the notice was actually too short of a period, and I think, given the substantial claim that this motion is making, I just don't think it's right with the limited amount of time, and I think also given councillor Johnson's absence in the chamber right now, I think she also deserves the opportunity to speak for herself as well. I don't think the way that this council was pursuing this matter is fair, I think there's a clear bias as well in this chamber, and I think from inconsistent ways that, that the meeting has been run for the past eight months, at least personally from what I've witnessed, I just don't think that this is suitable grounds for what this claim here is making about councillor Johnson. I think she deserves the right to speak on behalf of this motion, I think that this should be reconsidered. I think it's important that it's noted here today that she's actually not present while this is being discussed, so I think that things should be done quite differently. I also just wanted to add on top of this as well, I just think that for councillor Johnson, she's an independent councillor, it's a pretty tough gig here in, in city hall. Honestly, since being elected as well, being one of five, it's been a pretty tough gig too. I think the, from hearing stories of the past of how this council used to be run, I hear that there used to be a time where councillors used to sit in the tea room together and have a chat, and I think just the, the rules of polite society, I think, I think the way politics could be run could be done so differently, and I don't think this sets the right precedent for the way councillors run. I, I really truly just believe deeply that fundamentally councillor Johnson has the right to be able to speak to this as well, and the fact that she's not here means that maybe if you, if you're really adamant about what you're going to pursue, then maybe you should wait until she comes back, or maybe each of us should be seated down and the councillors who aren't from the LNP council should get a briefing or something along those lines so that we have a little bit more information than just a notice that gets passed through at, at the very, very end of the council business of the day, after we've only had one item on the ENC as well. There's been much opportunity for this to be brought up, I think there's also been lots of opportunity for our council on this side of the chamber to be briefed about this situation too, but there hasn't been. I don't know how much the LNP caucus has discussed this matter prior to this, or how many weeks they've been planning this against councillor Johnson, and I don't think that behaviour is right, and that would be the same for all sides, no matter who the councillor is.
Further speakers? Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can I just start by saying that we are applying the rules under the Act? And interestingly enough, the changes to the Act that were instituted last year were instituted by a Labor state government. Let, let that sink in, sink in. So we have a situation, last year with a Labor state government changed the rules, we are instituting those rules. Interestingly enough, councillor Johnston is well aware of those rules, she knows how many times you can be called out for inappropriate conduct or whatever, so it's not as if this would be a mystery to her. Now, what I would say is there's a lot of selective memory, particularly from the opposition councillors. They are choosing to frame this in a way that's inaccurate. Now, what, what happens here is that these, this particular matter will now be referred to the OIA, the OIA will undertake an investigation, and I'm going to assume, I don't propose to tell the OIA how to do their job, but I do expect the OIA...
Point of order, Madam Chair. This referral is about inappropriate meeting conduct, I can't hear councillor Allen because there are interjections from those opposite. No one on this side is interjecting.
Point of order.
One point of order at a time, thanks councillor Griffiths.
Ask for your ruling.
Do remind councillors to remain quiet in the chamber while another councillor is on their feet speaking, please, so that we can all hear them. Point of order councillor Griffiths.
Yeah, do you want all councillors, all opposition councillors thrown out of the chamber?
That is, that is not a point of order, and I apologize.
What a ridiculous statement.
Councillors, do not call out.
Councillor Griffiths, you are the subject of this, this issue at the moment.
One moment, please councillor Allen. And that's an example, again, of not, well, I am speaking and you're talking over me and you're still calling out, and that is not appropriate.
Point of order, Chair.
And again, calling out point of order while I'm speaking councillor Collier, wait till I'm finished, please. Point of order councillor Collier.
Chair, will you reprimand councillor Allen for not addressing his comments through you to councillor Griffiths?
Councillor, I could not hear him over councillor Griffiths. Now, I ask you all to remain quiet while another councillor is on their feet. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and so, you know, there's a, it's as if they're not in the same chamber as everybody else, you know, they, they're seeing it through a lens that I don't see the chamber. But nonetheless, you know, councillor Griffiths made a point that the way the Act is drafted is, isn't as it was intended. Well, we didn't draft the Act, the previous Labor state government drafted it, we are merely instituting the Act. Now, what happens in this particular instance is these matters will be referred to the OIA, they will undertake their investigation. Guess what? They may even use the chamber video to help inform their investigation, and so they will see how things unfold in this chamber, and if we are deemed to have got it wrong, well then fine, you know, that's the decision they'll make. To councillor Kim's point, you know, we have a requirement to bring this matter to the attention of the OIA in a specified timeframe. Read the Act, read the meeting's local law, we can't just sit on this ad infinitum and then decide, oh, we're going to, we're going to refer it to the OIA.
Point of order. One moment, please councillor Allen, councillor Kim.
Will councillor Allen take a question?
No, I won't.
Councillor Allen.
Look, yeah, and so, you know, there is a process here, and we are obliged to follow the Act, and we have a timeframe in which we have to refer this to the OIA, and that's all we're doing. So the fact that councillor Johnston has decided not to be in the room today doesn't change the obligation on us to make the referral, and that's what we're doing. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Strunk. Councillor Strunk, can you turn your microphone on, please?
You couldn't be there at the ballot box, so you have to try to change the rules to facilitate trying to get rid of probably one of the most successful councillors.
Point of order.
Councillor, councillor Collier.
Chair, I'm finding it very hard to hear councillor Strunk's contribution when councillor Allen is repeatedly yelling out. Will you reprimand him?
Councillors, I ask all councillors to remain quiet while councillor Strunk is on his feet. Councillor Strunk.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, for your protection. So one of the most successful councillors that this chamber probably has ever seen, and you only have to look at the voting intentions of her residents, seventy-four percent, I think it was the latest one, something that others would just dream of, right? And, and I, funny enough, I run into a number of her residents from time to time, and they all speak so favourably that she stands up for them. That's a lesson to us all, right? They are actually listening to what's going on here, or they're reading, and they're actually liking it because she does it in the way that they like. You may not like it because you look at, you look at her as a traitor, someone that got kicked out of the party, someone that Campbell couldn't totally get rid of because only the voters can do that. But she stuck it out through thick and thin with all the changes, and I love, I love councillor Hung, when he said, he said, "The updated to the meeting local laws", well, it wasn't an update, it was undemocratic change, quite frankly, all those rules that changed, restricting our ability to speak for a particular period of time, you cut it in half. Right? And there were some other changes as well, which quite frankly are undemocratic. And I don't give two hoots or a holler about what the state government parliament does or the federal parliament, we had ten minutes to speak in general business, and I'll just stick with that one, all right? These changes that councillor Hung was talking about. Now, at every opportunity, this chamber on that side, gaslights councillor...
Absolutely.
Councillor Johnston, at every opportunity to try to get her to respond inappropriately, and, and sometimes she loses it. I've, I've lost it myself occasionally, right? If, if I'm being a targeter, I think it's, it's, it's just not right. But honestly, as an independent, for goodness sake, she has no party behind her, right? We do, we're lucky, we have a head office that we can discuss things with, you know? But she, as an independent, they have no party behind them, they just have their residents. And the residents, I'll tell you what, will punish you if you try to do, if you try to get rid of her through the OAI. Now, you're saying, well, we're required under legislation to put these matters forward, well, it's all about interpretation of whether she breached anything in this chamber, and the speaker, a speaker makes that determination. The speaker's not independent here, hello?
That's right.
There's no independent speaker at local government level or, or state level or federal level, there isn't one. I mean, I, I think Milton Dick does a pretty good job in the federal parliament, but, you know? No one's independent, there's no speaker that's independent. I really feel sorry, and, and I know... I really feel sorry, and I know Emily Kim brought up the fact that she's not here. Now, you waited for her to leave. And I'm wondering if she was still here, whether you would have brought this up? Maybe you would have, maybe you wouldn't have. But at least she should have had the opportunity to address what you've said about her, right? And again, I think her residents, when they find out that you did this without her being in the chamber and not having the opportunity to debate, will hold you accountable for that undemocratic action, right? You know, we see a lot of stuff that happens overseas, but at least they're told about what's going to happen, when they're going to do it. And usually, they're in their various chambers to be able to rebut or rebuttal the debate that's coming from whoever's accusing them. Again, you couldn't be there at the ballot box over term after term after term.
Councillor Strunk, your time has expired. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Wong.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I found it interesting to hear from councillor Strunk about what he said about because you can't beat someone, so you change your rule. That is exactly what the former state Labor government did to us. And that is why we have this referral today. Because the state government tried to do that to Brisbane City Council. They just didn't realise they actually caught one of themselves. So, yeah, so unfortunately. And can I tell you, councillor Johnston knew about this motion tonight because the chair has kindly sent her an email informing her. I'm not going to tell you what sort of response our chair is getting, but she definitely know it is happening. That is why she's deliberately not to be here. Yeah, so I think councillor Johnston's behaviour speaks for itself. And we are just here to fulfil our legal duty to refer her to an independent agency for assessment. So if you'd like us to make the ruling, I think that would be fine, as she's happy with it. But look, we are just here to make that referral to an independent assessment agency to make sure her behaviour is assessed by that agency. So I ask everyone, every councillor here to fulfil your legal duty to support this motion.
We now put that motion to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
The motion is carried. Called by councillor Collier and seconded by councillor Strunk. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it. The voting being 17 in favour and five against.
The motion is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Councillors, we'll now move to general business. Are there any speakers? Councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on two items for general business. One is about the Lord Mayor's Australia Day Awards and one is about the passing of a- Well, it's not one of my residents, but a passing of a much-lot lady. So I'm going to start off with the bad news or the sad news first. So many of you may know of Miss Flora. She was a beautiful lady and she worked with myself and my staff at the Runcorn Family Fund Day for a long time, many years. And she did a fabulous job. And she was always so busy in actual fact and so good at what she did and so lovely with her children. She started to bring her son along and he came along and became part of the business as well. So as you can imagine, and I think she's worked for a few of the councillors here in our team and potentially opposite as well with what she was doing. And to say, when we got the email from her son telling us of her unexpected passing, to say was devastating was an understatement. So her son is coming to my family fun day on Sunday. So it'll be great to see him, but it will be a terrible loss for all of us that Miss Flora is no longer with us. On a more positive note, the Lord Mayor's Australia Day Awards. I had two residents receive awards. One was Melody Chen, and I think most of the people in this place would know about Melody. She's a stalwart of the Taiwanese community and has been for many, many, many years and does many, many things for the community, both in her role and also as a community leader. And just because she's a good person. And the other one that was in my ward that I was nominated for was Mark Smith. Great guy, if you've met him. He's part with the Runcorn Rockets, which is a fabulous basketball team that's run out at Runcorn High. Fabulous man, started the visiting with Gaoshung, where they bring students over from there to participate here. And also, they go over there and play as well. And I've been lucky enough and fortunate enough to have some funds that I've been able to help them with that. But Mark certainly goes above and beyond. So congratulations, Mark, on your well-earned award.
Further speakers. Councillor Chong Wang.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on the proposal to dump a mega-stadium in the green lungs of our city, Victoria Park Barabun. Frankly, I should not need to speak on this again. If the LNP could ever be trusted, I wouldn't have to. This council committed this city to the Victoria Park Barabun Master Plan. We funded the consultation of over 80,000 residents, 80,000. By February last year, the Lord Mayor had spent 33 million of ratepayers' funds on the design and early works for the master plan. In August, all three levels of government each committed 40 million of public funds. That's a further 120 million committed to the master plan. It only took a few months for the Lord Mayor to throw this out the window and spruik developer plans to dump a mega-stadium in the green lungs of our city. Well, last week, in a Senate inquiry, the federal government confirmed that, yes, they will fund a Brisbane arena, but they will not fund a new stadium. Is the Lord Mayor prepared to toss aside a 120 million agreement for a handful of wealthy developers? When will councillor Howard front Brisbane residents and take back her statement that she and the mayor would protect and expand Brisbane's precious green space from creating the city's biggest public park in 50 years? Over the next 22 years, it's estimated Brisbane will see an increase of up to 400,000 people in this local government area alone. We know this council have been struggling to meet its desired standards of service for green space for quite some time. We're very familiar with the LNP council selling off green space, failing to maintain green space, failing to even plan for green space in rapidly densifying suburbs like Milton. So it's no surprise that this council voted in November to reduce our green space standards. This vote alone will result in a loss of 290 hectares of green space for Brisbane's projected population by 2036. The LNP cannot be trusted. Mayor Shuna is cutting our green space and now he sets his sights on a historical park. While this mayor will never understand principles like transparency and accountability, he should at least know how to read a contract. Chair, councillors, I have brought with me the Olympic Host Contract. This was signed by councillor Adrian Shino on behalf of the host Brisbane City Council. I'd like to table this document to the chambers. If the mayor did this basic due diligence and read before signing on the dotted line, he would see that he has committed to the conservation of biodiversity and cultural heritage. He would see it stipulate that where new permanent venues need to be constructed, the hosts shall ensure that they are not located in or adjacent to statutory nature, cultural protected areas in world heritage sites. In our city plan, you will see that the entire park is classified as local heritage place. Furthermore, a huge portion of the park is state heritage, including the very site, Lord Mayor's beloved Archipelos Stadium. An honorary mention too to the term climate positive, which appears three times in this contract. There is nothing positive about gutting Brisbane's largest park in the midst of a climate and ecological crisis. LNP leaders can try their luck at mistruths like no new stadium or not ruling out anything in or out, or not our decision. But Mayor Shuna cannot waddle his way out of this one. Chair, I get a message to Mayor Shuna, councillor Howard and the Premier. Keep your word. Deliver Brisbane's biggest park. Protect Victoria Park Barabun.
Further speakers. Councillor Collier.
Thanks very much, Chair. And I just have two items of general business to speak to today. The first being the maintenance schedule at Balmoral Cemetery. Another week has, of course, gone by and this beautiful historical cemetery is looking derelict. There is grass up to a metre and a half high. While the grass is so high, it is incredibly likely that more destruction of historical graves will occur as contractors, of course, can't see where they're going when they eventually get there. This has been a concern of not only Friends of Balmoral Cemetery Group, but also many local residents have contacted us. We have diligently followed up these concerns. And time and time again, we get told by this LNP council, it's on a regular schedule, it'll get mowed, but that simply isn't the case. And I also wanted to bring up the spraying of grave tops. Previously, this had been scheduled in for twice a year. This was not done apparently at all last year and potentially just once done in 2023. So when this is, this regular sort of maintenance is disregarded, it just becomes harder and harder. This should be done twice a year. At this stage, you know, I have had multiple representations, like I said, made to me by members of the public who are shocked, they are embarrassed and they are quite frankly disgusted about the way that this council is treating this historical cemetery. Certainly, the Friends of Balmoral Cemetery, I have spoken to several times and they are really unhappy with the overall care and attention showed by this LNP council. So I have brought their concerns to the chamber today to hopefully shine a light on them and get some real action, not just once, but we need a commitment that this will be maintained year-round. It is the basic of decency of respect. The second thing I wanted to talk to about today was Four Voices. So everyone needs connection, but not everyone needs the same thing. And of course, we know that connection is fundamental to healing. And that is why I am very proud to be an ambassador to the charity Four Voices. Their mission is to provide support and social, digital and community employment, community and employment connections to women who may be or who are at risk of experiencing social isolation, family and domestic violence and/or homelessness. They are doing the most important work to help women. We are all incredibly aware of the statistics in relation to the scourge, that is, of course, domestic and family violence. We know that 65% of women who are experiencing homelessness have fled violence and that a staggering 85% of women have been sexually harassed. This must change. Four Voices do incredible work, offering a variety of ways for women to connect free of charge and importantly, free of judgment and red tape. You may have seen their vans out in the community, offering a cuppa and just a chance to talk to one of their friendly volunteers who care. You can't put a price on that. Four Voices also offer phone support with regular support volunteers who listen and encourage any women who is vulnerable to talk through any issues at no cost. And they provide the digital support to connect, whether that's sourcing a mobile phone, getting set up on a laptop or just finding information online. I know that if you are experiencing domestic or family violence, it's an incredibly overwhelming time. And the support that Four Voices provides in this space is invaluable. Personally, I'm passionate about ending domestic and family violence and homelessness and supporting victims. So to be an ambassador for this incredible organisation and highlight the work that they are doing for women in Brisbane and beyond is a true privilege. Thank you.
Further speakers. Councillor Strunk.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Gee, I thought there would be a lot of general business from the other side tonight, but obviously not. But of course, we only have five minutes, so it better be quick.
Can you tell us what you're going to talk about?
Yes, I will. I'm going to speak about one of our schools, one of our community groups and a Brisbane City Council art gallery out my way. Start with Glenalla. We had the Gem Awards that took place on Monday this week. And Glenalla High School has had a transformation over the last 20 years that you just, it's incredible. If you could have seen it the way I saw it in 2001 and see it today, and I'm not talking necessarily about the buildings, but we did have a Schools of Tomorrow program that went through and built a lot of the new buildings, all air-conditioned and all the rest of it. But it's the students themselves and they're so proud of their school. It all started with a really great principal, Matria Walton, who introduced a laptop program for every year eight. And it's never looked back since. It's just grown from strength to strength to strength. And I'm just so proud of it. So the Gem Program is about honouring those students that achieve an academic standard, right? Whether it's bronze, silver or gold. And I was able to present the bronze awards. And the principal said to me after the awards ceremony, "How's your hand?" Because there were so many that achieved all Bs, nothing below a B, right? And that's phenomenal. This is a school of 1,200 kids that started off in 2001 with 400 and it was going down, right? They have achieved, they had an ATAR student last year as well that was on one of the highest in Queensland. And, but of course, the school is culturally based. And their cohort is the United Nations, basically. And some of the students are so, so, so impressive. And of course, their principal, Michelle Snell, is doing an unbelievable job. And they've asked me for a traffic management plan because the school has been that successful that they need a traffic management plan to try to control the drop-off and pickup. So I said we would definitely do look into that. For what time I have left, the Forest Lake Lions Club undertake a weekend barbecue, Saturday, Sunday, at the Crossacre Nursery. And they've been doing that for now two years. I just want to pay tribute to the club. Now, you don't need the whole club to do the barbecue, only two at a time can handle it. But this nursery also is a supplier for our free plant program. So I'm really happy to give a big shout-out to Coal and the nursery. They do a great job in the program that we run out of the nursery. Because the last nursery that my residents had to go to was down at Carrawatha, which was very nice, but it was a long way to travel, a long way to travel. Lastly, the art gallery, that's the only suburban art gallery that Brisbane City Council owns, is managed now by the Vietnamese chapter, the Queensland chapter. Anne Lynn is their coordinator for the art gallery. And I just want to give a big shout-out because they just keep improving and improving and improving. Honestly, it will rival, I don't know about showings, but it'll certainly rival some of those galleries in the city on the presentation, once they get done. And I think we should, I think- Et je pense que nous devrions, je pense que conseiller Howard, nous devrions vraiment faire quelque chose en essayant de le soutenir de toute façon que nous puissions parce que c'est notre seule galerie d'art suburban que nous avons. Elle n'est pas énorme, mais elle n'est pas petite non plus. Elle a eu beaucoup de showings, mais principalement des artistes locaux, directement des îles des bays jusqu'à Ipswich. Et ils font un travail formidable en rendant la galerie disponible pour ceux qui sont en train d'arriver qui n'ont pas beaucoup de monnaie, pour les showings et les choses comme ça. Et je ne peux pas parler trop hautement de ce que le chapitre a fait puisqu'ils ont pris le contrôle il y a environ 18 mois et nous l'ont donné à la location, ce qu'ils sont très heureux de voir. Et c'est juste pas des artistes vietnamiens, par ailleurs. La majorité ne sont pas des artistes vietnamiens. Ils sont des artistes de tous les modes de vie, toutes les cultures.
Conseillère Strong, votre temps a expiré.
Merci.
D'autres auditeurs? Conseillère Kim.
Merci Présidente. Je voudrais aussi parler de quelques événements qui ont eu lieu dans mon quart durant la vacances. En effet, nous avons eu notre grande fête au Day Pool avec Bluey comme le personnage principal de la fête. Nous avons eu un temps merveilleux avec les résidents locaux et je voulais remercier la famille d'Udington qui avaient leurs lampes de Noël très populaires pendant la vacance de Noël, c'est là qu'ils ont invité le personnage de Bluey. Donc, j'ai trouvé le compagnon de chasse mascot, ils sont arrivés et ont célébré avec nous. Mais aussi ce jour-là, il y a beaucoup de gens que je dois remercier pour le faire possible. Il y avait le manager de la piscine raclette de Parkinson Aquatic Centre et aussi tous leurs gardiens et employés qui étaient là jusqu'à 9 heures du matin à ranger, se mettre, enlever tous les bains. Ils ont fait un travail vraiment génial. Et les gardiens étaient là pour s'assurer que les enfants étaient tous en sécurité aussi pendant leur游泳. Donc, c'était un jour merveilleux, en partie pour eux. Et aussi, c'était la première fois que j'ai rencontré le crew de la chaîne de montage qui viennent normalement aux événements des conseillers. Ils ont mis la large écran et les familles ont pu regarder le robot wild. Donc, c'était très simple et c'était difficile pour moi en premier de visualiser ce que ça ressemblerait à faire un film d'entraînement. Mais heureusement, nous avons fini par l'avoir fait. Donc, c'était un jour merveilleux. Nous avons aussi mis Grimace. Je dois remercier tous les volontaires jusqu'à présent des Calamelle qui ont porté le costume Grimace. Pour ceux qui ne connaissent pas, le Grimace est la chose rose de McDonald's. Vous pouvez aller dans la rue et voir le personnage. Ils ont fait une boule dédiée à ça aussi, ce qui a bien marché. Donc, ça était destiné à cibler nos enfants âgés en cas qu'il y ait des enfants qui sont trop cool pour Bluey. Donc, nous avons eu beaucoup de mascots. Nous avons aussi Auriel et aussi Turtle, qui était le mascot pour la piscine raclette de Ratcliffe. En gros, c'était un jour merveilleux. Le Lion Club de Alchester as aussi été là pour cuisiner le barbecue. Nous avons aussi réussi à obtenir plus de 1000 saucisses sponsorisées par la country choice australienne par un ancien employé du conseil qui travaillait pour l'un des offices du conseil et maintenant travaille pour leur business qui est basé à Murray et je vais visiter leur business la semaine prochaine. Et je vais essayer de voir s'il y a plus de sponsorisations que nous pouvons obtenir pour des groupes comme les clubs de lions et d'autres groupes dans notre région pour qu'ils puissent obtenir plus de saucisses gratuitement et finalement faire ce retour et utiliser les profits sur les non-profits dans notre région. Nous avons eu beaucoup de collaboration communautaire. Nous avons eu le Lion Club de Alchester et nous avons aussi eu de nombreux groupes communautaires et leaders communautaires. Nous avons Jim Chalmers, notre membre fédéral Frenken et leur contribution et leurs volontaires aussi, James Martin et aussi Liane Nokku qui ont donné le pain. Donc, nous avons eu un jour merveilleux. Nous avons eu un large turnout de familles aussi qui sont allées pour le游泳. La prochaine année, je pense que je vais devoir préparer quelques plus de flammes. Je ne savais pas combien il prendrait pour brûler chacun, pour s'assurer que les enfants en ont disponibles et je pense que quelques personnes l'ont pris chez eux aussi. Mais en gros, c'était un jour merveilleux. Je remercie aussi tous les officers du conseil pour tout le travail qu'ils font pour maintenir une telle beauté de l'endroit. Et je sais que récemment, il y avait une mur installée à ce pool aussi. Donc, je soutiens tous les futurs upgrades de la piscine aquatic de Parkinson et aussi les 2 $ de sauter étaient très populaires pendant la vacance de la saison et je sais que les familles ont pris des ralentis, surtout pour ce jour parce que le free swimming. Donc, je regarde l'attente d'organiser beaucoup plus d'événements à l'avenir dans notre communauté. Donc, c'était la grande fête au Day Pool et le second que je voulais remercier aussi étaient tous les employés et tout le team qui dirigent Big Fork Comedy Theatre qui est basé à Fortitude Valley. Donc, j'y suis allé vendredi soir. Il s'est vu qu'il y avait un tas d'artistes merveilleux. Ils sont très bons à improviser. Désolée. Oui, beaucoup de jeunes gens. J'étais vraiment surprise. Nous avons eu un gros crew là-bas, à l'arrière de la salle. Les artistes sont incroyables. Ils disent juste quelques lignes et puis ils viennent avec des histoires inspirées par quelques choses aléatoires que vous pouvez mettre dedans. Et en fait, ces artistes se rencontrent pour la première fois aussi, quelques-uns d'entre eux et puis ils font des workshops pendant un long temps. C'est du travail spectaculaire qu'ils font. Le public était en fait, ou bien l'audience, ils étaient tous des enfants de l'arts de l'UQ Law. Il y a aussi des gens de toutes les régions de Brisbane. C'est certainement une démographie que je n'ai pas vraiment fait beaucoup avec en termes de travail communautaire avant et je suis très contente de revenir là encore. Je recommande vraiment le travail qu'ils font. Donc, c'est si merveilleux que le conseil les soutient pour le BrizAsia Festival. Je sais que c'était très populaire. Et ils font aussi, je pense, une série Where You're From où ils ont assez de comédie. J'ai demandé à tout le monde des jeunes gens autour de moi, comment avez-vous trouvé cet événement et venez de là? Et beaucoup d'entre eux ont juste trouvé ça sur Facebook et Eventbrite. Donc, très bien que la scène de Brisbane est en plein avance et la scène des arts et de la culture. Je sais que Charlie XCX a aussi été un hit récemment quand ils ont eu leur festival Lane Way. Nous avons beaucoup de choses en train de faire et je pense que c'est un moment vraiment excitant maintenant de être ici. Donc, je regarde tous les futurs choses que le conseil de la ville de Brisbane offre et j'espère que nous supportons beaucoup de nos programmes culturels et arts et aussi des événements gratuits pour les familles pendant la crise de la vie.
Conseillère Kim, votre temps a expiré. D'autres auditeurs? Conseillère Wolf.
Oh, je voulais dire...
Conseillère Wolf.
Au côté de la Chambre?
Wow, super. Merci Madame Présidente. Je voudrais parler de quelque chose de plutôt positif dans le prix de l'award Walter Taylor. La dernière mise en place du reservoir de Green Hill, qui est le espace de reflet de la branche. Maintenant, c'est super excitant. Après beaucoup de temps l'année dernière avec la consultation et les fenêtres mobiles, j'ai rassemblé beaucoup d'évidence de la communauté parce que c'est ce que nous sommes tous ici pour pour trouver quelles remises ils aimeraient voir dans le reservoir de Green Hill. Et, curieusement, ce qui est sorti de ça c'est que beaucoup de résidents ont transformé le tableau d'information en un peu de tribute pour les animaux décédés. Donc, comme amoureux que ce soit, le tableau d'information ne fonctionnait pas plus comme un tableau d'information. Donc, la communauté a eu cette grande idée d'un bel espace rainbow, une idée de branche. Savez-vous ce qu'une branche est? Donc, à travers le grand travail de Shane, mon manager d'élaboration, nous avons mis en place un plan. Et je suis très reconnaissante pour le design que il a fait. Nous avons livré un espace absolument beau, une branche sphérique qui a une chaise reflective et deux pilles derrière où vous pouvez en fait cloner les collèves de pets décédés. Et j'ai eu tant de gens de la communauté locale qui ont appelé et ont dit quel belle contribution c'est à leur espace. C'est très aimé et c'est un espace heartfelt vraiment maintenant pour ceux qui utilisaient l'endroit avec leurs chiens pour marcher régulièrement. Maintenant, ils peuvent y aller et avoir les souvenirs de leur temps ensemble. Donc, je voulais juste partager ça parce que c'est une histoire de succès merveilleuse et le conseil est toujours engagé à livrer plus pour voir et faire dans les quartiers. Merci.
Hello.
D'autres auditeurs? Conseillère Griffiths.
Oui, je ne savais pas si la réunion allait être fermée ou non. Je veux juste parler de trois éléments de travail général. L'un à propos de la bushland, deux, à propos d'une stoppage de bus et enfin à propos de la lumière à l'instant. Donc, mes problèmes, je suppose que j'ai été intéressé par le conseiller Davis aujourd'hui avec le squirmement et le mouvement en relation avec notre fonds d'acquisition de la bushland. Les résidents m'ont certainement levé la main, comme ont aussi plusieurs groupes de bush care. Et je suis un peu horrifié de entendre que le conseil va loin de acheter de la bushland. Et ce que nous avons vu ces six dernières semaines, il n'y a pas de nouvelle bushland achetée. En fait, nous voyons de plus en plus de monnaie qui est prise de la commission de la bushland qui a été financée par le fonds général pour la maintenance. Donc, nous voyons cette fraude sous l'UMP où ils ne vendent pas de la bushland, où ils utilisent en fait le monnaie pour d'autres choses. Et je suppose que je vois ça comme un mal usage et un métrisme du fonds d'acquisition de la bushland. Et aujourd'hui, nous avons confirmé par le conseiller Davis que 11 millions a été dépensé sur le terrain à Archfield Wetlands et je remercie cette monnaie. Je remercie le développement de cette région, mais ça ne devrait pas être fait avec des fonds de la bushland. Les gens donnent cette monnaie pour que la bushland soit restaurée, la bushland soit achetée, pas pour construire des terrains et de l'infrastructure. Et je pense que la plupart des gens, la plupart des résidents de Brisbane que je parle sont horrifiés. Je sais que récemment, j'ai eu une réunion avec quelques coordinateurs de la bush care qui disaient qu'ils avaient une réunion avec le conseiller Adams et le conseiller Cunningham qui ne voyaient pas vraiment ce qui se passe vraiment avec ce fonds. Et ils sont très inquiets à ce sujet et ont vraiment le sentiment que les résidents de Brisbane sont trompés avec ce que les LMP font. Ce n'est pas surprenant que ça soit un thème constant parce que ça arrive une fois et une fois. Donc, je sais que le groupe de la bush care, le Nord Brisbane Catchment, certainement voulaient, à McDowell, voulaient voir des bushes achetées là-bas. Et ils ont appelé 440 Beckett Road à Bridgman Downs pour être acheté. Et je supporterais ça et je sais que cette partie de la Chambre supporterait ça parce que c'est un lien manquant dans le habitat des koalas clé qui ne devrait pas être développé. Ça devrait être conservé comme bushland. Et c'est perturbant que ce maire, qui est overseas comme nous le savons, est si intéressé par la développement d'un site plutôt que d'utiliser le monnaie qui lui a été donnée par les résidents pour la vente de la bushland, pas pour acheter de la bushland. Donc, je vais appeler le maire, je vais appeler le député maire et je sais que le député maire voit qu'elle fait des décisions sensibles en déplaçant cette monnaie, en la cachant, en la changeant, que c'est sensible. Je ne pense pas que la communauté, quand elles savent ça, voit ça comme sensible. Quand elles l'apprennent, elles le voient comme diabolique. La sneakiness de ce conseil LMP paraître vert, paraître vert, mais ils ne sont pas vraiment verts. Ils ne font pas vraiment ça. Ils font ce que les développeurs veulent. Et je pense que c'est un bloc de terrain que nous devrions acheter. Deuxièmement, je voudrais parler de quelque chose que je n'ai pas été en mesure de faire action depuis longtemps. En fait, j'ai levé ça dans cette Chambre avant, j'ai levé ça avec le président avant. Je passe régulièrement et j'ai juste eu une autre plainte à ce sujet. Et c'est une stoppage de bus à l'extérieur du plus grand hôpital que nous avons sur le Sud. C'est sur Ipswich Road, c'est à l'extérieur du hôpital PA. Et si vous passez par cette stoppage et Dieu le sait, je l'ai parlé dans cette Chambre, vous auriez pensé que l'un des conseils LMP aurait eu un peu d'intérêt en passant par cette stoppage. Elle est très lumineuse. Elle est vraiment très lumineuse. Les officiers sont d'accord. Les bulles devraient être changées, nous devrions les rendre plus luminescentes, nous devrions les lever à la compliance, mais ils ne peuvent pas obtenir le département de transport. Ils ne peuvent pas obtenir le département de transport pour le laver. Je sais que nous avons plusieurs, je reçois plusieurs plaintes de patients, mais aussi de travailleurs part time qui utilisent cette stoppage. Je vois plusieurs personnes là en l'obscurité et je pense que c'est obscène que je, en tant que conseiller, ne puisse pas obtenir de l'action de ce conseil LMP ou la bureaucratie pour ce motif pour laver cette stoppage.
Conseillère Griffiths, votre temps a expiré. Y a-t-il d'autres auditeurs? Ça conclut notre réunion. Merci les conseillers.